Good evening and welcome to the Township of Woolwich Committee of the whole meeting on April 11th, 2022. We are now live on YouTube. I will now do a roll call of council. I councillor Martin am present and chairing this meeting. Mayor Shans.
I'm here.
Councillor McMillan.
Present.
Councillor Merlehan.
Present.
Councillor Redicop.
Present.
Councillor Shans.
Present.
I need a resolution to convene in an open session. Is there a mover and a seconder? Fred and Larry? Thank you. I will now do a land acknowledgement. The land on which we meet has been here from the time memorial. People have inhabited Southern Ontario for about 10,000 years. And we acknowledge people who lived here when settlers arrived and who share this land with us. May we together learn to care for and respect each other, our flora and fauna and the land we inhabit together. Are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest? Seeing none. We have one item to come forward from our closed session this evening. It's a recommendation which I will read. That the council of the township of Woolwich ratifies the collective bargaining settlement entered into with the Canadian Union of Public Employees, Local 1542 for 2022 through 2024. Is there a mover and a seconder for that? Councillor Shans and Councillor McMillan. Thank you. And we will now go into our public meeting.
Councillor Martin.
Oh, sorry. All in favor? Thank you, that's carried. The following portion of the meeting is for information only and no decisions will be made tonight. Any questions can be directed to the Development Services staff following the meeting. I declare the planning public meeting to be open. We're dealing with Development Services Information Report, Official Plan Amendment, and application and a zone change. And we have a manager of planning, Jeremy Wink, with us tonight to provide an overview of his information report. Jeremy.
Thank you, council, members council. So yes, it's zone change 52022 and OPA 22022 for the property owned by 39A Holdings Limited. So we're dealing with the property at 39 Arthur Street North, which is located just south of the trail and just north of the Canuck Jake Creek and just east of Arthur Street. Property is approximately 4.7 hectares in size. Approximately 1.8, approximately 1.6 hectares is currently designated industrial area and zoned general dry industrial M1F. The F refers to the floodplain regulations. And it also has site specific zoning on that portion of the property as it recognizes the opportunity to dismantle stored and salvage water vehicles, which was the previous use on the property. The balance of the lands currently are about three hectares are designated open space and are zoned open space, oh, one of the township zoning by law. The applicant is proposing to amend the township's official plan and zoning by law to facilitate the expansion of the existing gravel parking lot to the east to permit additional storage, parking or transfer trucks and tractor trailers. So specifically in the official plan amendment, they're looking to redesignate approximately 1.95 hectares of the rear of the property from open space to industrial. To align with that, the official plan, from the line with the official plan, those changes, they're looking to mend the zoning to match to bring the general dry industrial M1 zone to cover the lands that are already zoned M1, but this additional 1.95 hectares. They would still maintain the floodline provisions that are required. They demand the site specific zoning. So they're proposing to remove the salvage yard, dismantling of motor vehicles and to replace it with the site specific requirement to allow parking, gravel parking trucks and trailers on that rear portion, that 1.95 hectare portion. The remainder of the property, which is generally along the southern portion of the lands, will remain zoned open space and will be to delineate the natural features and some buffers along that area. Staff, just like to point out, the applicant did submit a number of reports as part of this justification to for their proposed applications. So there is the planning justification, as well as archaeological, stormwater, geotechnical studies. But I like to highlight that they did submit a compatibility study under the provinces guidelines, which is noise, dust and odor requirements. So they submitted a report in those lines. They also submitted a study on the D4 guidelines for the province, which deals with landfills. And as council may be aware, this property does have a former landfill on it. So the study did look at the impacts of the development in terms of what it might do to the landfill that is existing on the property and maintained the property. They did the environmental studies and completed some environmental impacts and the tree preservation plans. So all those are compiled, they are available on the township's webpage and for people to review and they are summarized in the planning justification report also. One other item to note is the rear strip of about 12.2 to 5 metres is potentially being considered for to be conveyed to the township because that's where the township is a water line right now and water main. And they're looking to potentially convey that to the township. So we would have ownership versus over easement. So some letters were received, they've been attached and we know there's some people speaking tonight in addition to the applicants who are also here to give a further review of their application. There's no other questions. Staff has done at this time.
Council, are there any questions for Mr. Wink? Councillor Merlehan?
Yeah, thank you through you, councillor Martin, to Mr. Wink. I'm wondering if you could give us a little bit of a historical perspective on that property. It started as a landfill and then I'm just wondering what were the parameters of the council at the time that that made the 3.1 hectares around the currently the space that's being used now as a salvage yard. The 3.1 hectares, how come that was turned into open space and it wasn't just all M1 zoning or savage yard zoning?
Thank you, Mr. Chair to councillor Merlehan. A good question. To be honest, it's hard to find some of those records and know exactly what took place. But we do know that that rear portion was designated potentially because at the time the landfill was in that portion and they weren't sure if anything should, could or should take place. And I think also there was some potential that they understood that there was potential the floodlines were involved that area also and were greater environmental concerns, which we have now more information on under this current application that those environmental concerns are not as existent as we thought. So no full details, but it's probably just tied to bit around that landfill scenario is my greatest understanding.
Okay. And then my other question would be about the reports themselves. Is the township in a position that they would ask for some of those reports to be peer reviewed only because of the nature of the previous businesses that have operated on that property?
It is something that staff could consider if necessary, if we, if necessary. The compatibility studies are actually reviewed by the region in terms of the noise, dust and odor. So that's the region's responsibility to review and give us comment back. But if any of the other studies are deemed questionable, yes, staff could go for a period view.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Shans.
Thank you through you to Jeremy, a couple, a couple of questions. What, so, so they're requesting to have a gravel parking lot for trucks. Is there anything else that could go there with the request that's in front of us today?
Yes, through Mr. Chair to Mayor Shans, good question also. In this case, the application is purely for the gravel parking lot for trucks and trailer parking. The study identified in the D4 study, that's one of the ones they presented, reviewed opportunities, what could and couldn't kind of take place. And they determined because that landfill is in that area, it has to be gravel, it can't be asphalt, it needs to maintain the gravel parking lot. But they also identified no buildings or structures could be permitted. So it would be pretty limited to anything that can sit on the gravel. So trucks and trailers makes good sense, but anything else that could park on it would both be both the only thing that could potentially be considered.
Okay. And, and I can ask this to the applicant too, but what's the nature of the business that's applying for this?
So currently the site is used for Grand Ridge Trucking, that they have, they are using a portion of the site for their truck parking operation. And Brew Baker Roofing is using this portion of the site. So the plan is just to extend those uses to give additional parking for more tractor trailers and along those lines. So but it, those are just renting the property, they are not the owners. Those two businesses are just rented.
Okay, thank you. And, and final question. The right of way that, that was talked about, is that also where we talked about having a trail?
Yes, to, to, come here, Shans, yes, that is a section where there is a bit of a informal trail at this point in time and it'd be a potential if the lands were conveyed over to the township because it would run from the current trail right to Bolander Park. Then it would be a potential that staff could consider looking at creating more formalized trail over that section of where the water main is.
Thank you.
Councillor Redicop?
I have two questions for Mr. Wink through you, Chair Martin. The first one is, how long ago was, was the landfill in use? And the second one is, why can't you asphalt a landfill site?
So, thank you. I'm trying to remember the date when the landfill was last used. I know it's in the report and I just drawing a blank. I'm not sure off the top of my head. But it has been some time, I'm going to say that somewhere in the 30s, the 50s, maybe 1930s, the 50s, I can't recall exactly. So don't quote me. Why can't it be asphalted? The study determined that it shouldn't, it was inappropriate to land, to asphalt it and seal it in. So it'll be sealing the site and that's not appropriate. I'm not an expert on landfills. The report was a little more in detail, but it just stated that because the asphalt would seal things in, it wouldn't let it was not as good for the site as, as, as keeping it gravel. I think the, their experts from the applicant could probably explain that much further than I could at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Next, we will hear from Amanda Stelling and you Handy from the GSP Group, who are representing the applicant this evening. Ms. Stellings and Mr. Handy, please turn your video and microphone on and begin your presentation when you are ready.
Thank you, Chair Martin. Mayor Shans, members of council, staff, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Hugh Handy and I'm vice president and a land use planner with GSP Group based in Kitchener. I also have with me this evening Amanda Stellings, who is a planner with our firm and has been assisting me on this project. We also have this evening to a couple of the questions as well. We're here on behalf of 39A Holdings Limited. And our client, Robert Shapiro, I believe, has tuned in as well to be able to hopefully answer any questions this evening that you may have specifically. I also have Jim Walls, who is with Burnside Engineering and maybe some of the detailed questions on the landfill, we'll be able to answer those either through our presentation or through questions. I also have Nathan Miller from NRSI, Natural Resource Solutions Inc. And he's a natural here, on the natural heritage side, dealing with the features on the property. So tonight, as Mr. Wink has given you an excellent overview, is an introduction. We've obviously been at this for a little, a little while, preparing the application, talking with the township in understanding the property, the unique nature of the property and where it sits within the industrial area. I'll go over a bit of the history as we understand it. And as Mr. Wink had said, it is sort of an interesting with the landfill, with the industrial use and how it's evolved over time. But as you can see, a lot of the property from the aerial photo is, is covered in, in trees and where the former landfill site would be on the east side of the property. The franchise to the property has a building off of Arthur Street as well. The next slide gives sort of a zoom in of that area, showing the site in red. The Kissing Bridge Trail, which was the former railway line on the north side of the property. We'll talk a little bit more in subsequent slides about the connection that we hope to offer through this process to link essentially Bolander Park to Kissing Bridge Trail. And then also recognizing that this sits within a broader residential area that, that we need to be sensitive to, both in terms of what those operations are and how this fits in with the broader neighborhood. Obviously, we have Canuck Jake Creek that runs through here as well. So we have some environmental features, as Mr. Wink has indicated from a floodplain perspective. And again, the tree cover on the property. As you can see, it also has a gravel parking area right now that has existed for some time, as well as some of that is within the compound that would have been part of the former auto recycling on the property. Next slide. So as we can piece together from the records, some of these are from the township that I believe Mr. Scarphone back in the day put together based on some of the matters that were going on in the property. There are some things that date back to the 40s. Now, I think on our chart, we may have the Bolander Municipal landfill should actually go after. I believe based on our reporting, it was in the 60s, between 62 and 69, that the actual landfill was, was on the property. And that subsequently closed, it's still being monitored by the region on an ongoing basis. But really, the, where the industrial use or the salvage yard starts is, as we can understand, is in the 80s, early 80s. And that had some zoning by law amendments in 87 and 91 to permit a larger area of the salvage yard and some site specific regulations in 91. So it was really a 30 to 35 year use on that property. That this and probably former councils would, would have been aware of. Enter our client in 2020, has cleaned up the property since and has looked at the property as being valuable from their operation and trying to balance essentially the landfill use and manage that still on a long-term basis and yet allow for some further uses of the property in the interim. The next slide, please. So the proposed development is really just then simply parking out the remainder of the property. As you can see, there's a line through the middle of the property and really that's the area that's outside. So to the right of that blue line in the middle of the screen is the floodline. And to the east or to the west, that is areas that would be within the floodplain. So essentially the current operation is in the floodplain and the building is in the floodplain. To the east then is the area that we'd be looking at parking out. And so this is being reviewed by the GRCA. The technical studies are being reviewed to ensure that line is defined in terms of where that floodline is. So the purple area outlines the area to be used as part of this application. The red line again is the outside of the property. So some of this land goes to the, over towards, I think it's Riverside, shouldn't be Church Street over there, Riverside on the sketch. And then over to High Street on the right is a terminus. There's no roundabout or turning circle at this, at the end of High Street. So it just dead ends at the property currently. And as part of the, the application, as I mentioned, there is an easement for a water line that connects up to the Kissing Bridge Trailway. And our intent is through this application and through further discussions with the township is to dedicate that area. So there's essentially a link between Bolander Park and the Kissing Bridge Trailway. That's about 12.5 metres wide, just to give you some idea on that area and a little under probably a quarter of an acre or a half an acre in size. Next slide. So the intent of the application is to continue to retain the existing building and gravel parking area on the site. And then, next slide. Is to then have the gravel parking area to the east for the commercial storage vehicles. And as you can see, where we're proposing it, there'll still remain a buffer area as part of the area to the east and as part of the potential designation of those lands for the municipality. Next slide. And again, this just highlights then where that area would be, the potential dedication. And then the stormwater management area that would be part of this. And this is running then along the floodline to ensure that anything that is coming off this would be treated before eventually running off the property. There's also a butternut, which is just noted down on the bottom of the screen that is shown on there. We, that's an endangered species. And we, through the application process, have studied that to ensure that tree will not be impacted as part of the development. Next slide. This is a picture showing the link that we believe has been constructed by some of the neighbors over, over the creek system to connect the trail. Essentially connect the end of High Street to the Kissing Bridge Trail. And obviously the importance of the trail to the neighborhood is seen by its active use and the connection to the broader Kissing Bridge Trailway. Next slide. So Mr. Wink has gone over, I think, the application for the official plan amendment. We'd essentially be looking at redesignating the open space area and, and, and looking at recognizing essentially the area that is appropriate outside of the floodline for this use and recognizing that it's for parking, that we won't be doing any structures in that area, given the landfill. Next slide. Zoning by law amendment then would reflect again in the purple area that, what the nature of the uses would be. And of course, this is going to be reviewed by your staff as well in the fullness of time. And again, we're at the, the front end of the process introducing the application, but we, we believe this is a, an appropriate use of the land given its surroundings and given the sensitivities we've taken into account through the applications. Next. As Mr. Wink has indicated, there's a full suite of reports that have been submitted with the application. And I will go, won't go over those in detail, but there, they will be reviewed and we are open as required to have those further peer reviewed if, if necessary. Next slide. So we've heard through correspondence that Mr. Wink has received, the township has received, that there are concerns with noise, dust and lighting. There's been questions as to asphalt versus gravel. There's been questions regarding, why does this need to be converted from open space into industrial? And then property values, by no means this may be an exhaustive list tonight. We've also heard some of council in their questions. In terms of what we could tell you this evening and further through questions, in terms of the noise, dust and lighting, the intention is to have a sort of a coarse gravel service on here that would not create or minimize the dust that would be on there. There's no intention to have material handling, so like transfer of things between trucks that trucks would come on and leave from the property. So we're not looking at a lot of activity in the parking lot other than picking up the trucks and take, or picking up the trailers and taking them to another, another property. The hours of operation are during the day for this business. That's the intention. There will be security lighting at night. But that will be intended to be cut off, cut off lighting to make sure that, that that's, there's not light spread to other properties. As you can see from our other sketches, there will be buffers remain around the perimeter of the property left in a natural state and through the trail system, that will also be a separation. The fencing on the property, it's our intent to maintain that type of fencing or a similar type of fencing based on further discussions to not have anything be seen from surrounding properties. And again, there's open space areas that we hope to maintain through this application. I think from a standpoint of historical, knowing and having worked in, in the township for some time, this former use often times was maybe annoying to some of the neighbors, maybe annoying to the township. And we hope through this, I think you've seen the changes that have happened to the site. The intention of the owner and obviously he's here to speak to it if you want to hear from him, but he wants to be a good neighbor. And therefore looking at trying to ensure that this is developed in an orderly and proper manner. Again, we hope that there are things like the dedication of this that can be a public benefit to the municipality as well as forwarding, obviously, the interests of the landowner to have some more economic advantage from this property as it sits today. So with that, I think that brings my presentation to a conclusion. And Amanda and I are here as well, there's the rest of our team to answer any questions that we can, or if we can answer the questions tonight to get you the answers that you require. Thank you.
Thank you. You, committee members, if any questions? Councillor Merlehan?
Yeah, thank you. Would it be possible to stop sharing the screen just so we can see? Great, thank you. Through you, Chair Martin, to Mr. Handy. I do have, I have two questions. My first question would be the open space question. The, I was previously working with the previous owner with the township and he had wanted to convert open space. And I was under the understanding at that point that converting open space was like a near impossibility and close to like converting parkland. Can you, in your, I don't, I can't think of any places in Woolwich that have converted open space to an industrial use. But in your experience, can you provide a couple of examples, maybe where this has happened and, and it's been fine?
Thank you through you, Chair Martin, to councillor Merlehan. The one that comes to mind is not within Woolwich, but it's an application I did in Guelph. The one that comes to mind is not within Woolwich, but it's an application I did in Guelph where it was in an open space next to a hydro corridor. And so it was a kind of an orphaned piece from the broader natural heritage system. And in that case, it was a an official plan and zoning by law amendment for residential out of the open space system.
Okay. And in your research and the reporting that you provided the township, was was there any explanation for why part of the land was given as open space and why then it was converted to salvage and other uses and not all done at once?
Um, to Mr. Ving's point through you again to the counselor. The the history is is sort of disjointed and scattered, but I guess it grew over time really from the 40s through that it was got a little bit larger, but I think and I guess based on and Amanda may have some further information, but the protection of the landfill site and maybe just not taking that aspect on was back to Mr. Ving's point of where it sort of got stopped. As well, you know, it it could have been an issue of, you know, the floodplain at the time as well and just not having studied that further.
Okay. My second question is regarding the the tree and the canopy coverage on that particular property. You you look at your, you know, the bird's eye view there and it's a significant area of canopy coverage and it's something that we don't have a whole lot of in in Woolwich Township and we actually want more. We're we're in the process of trying to plant more trees and rather than chop them down. Can you tell me if there's a plan that goes along with the cutting down of trees as if we're going to, you know, find other areas to replant or I'm not sure what the policy is in the township. It was a township policy that we as a municipality plant two more trees for every or not sure if that applies to these kind of applications, but is there a plan to do something with planting more trees?
Yeah, through you Chair Martin to Councilor Merlehan, I might get Nathan Miller, who's with NRSI, just to come on and answer that question specifically, Councilman.
Yeah, absolutely. I can step in there if you. Counselor Merlehan, so we undertook an environmental impact study as well as a tree preservation plan to look at specifically that. So we assessed it and you know, we we did identify that the forested portion of the site is dominated by invasive Norway maple and other non-native species. But nonetheless, it is tree cover and we do want to make sure that we preserve that. And so within the tree preservation plan, we identified that as per the Woolwich Township Design Guidelines, we would replace any trees that are removed at a one-to-one ratio. And if there's not space on this site, we would look into planting them elsewhere. And we would be referring to the Woolwich Tree Group to see if they had any recommendations for areas. You know, Bolander Park and and other areas within the the vicinity would be excellent options.
Okay. And can you tell us how many trees then did you inventory on that property that will have to be removed?
Yeah, so I the exact number I can look it up, but it's around 200 trees, I believe, that would be removed. Yeah, I'm just looking at it now here. Yeah, around 200.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, if I may, I've got one or two. Larry, go ahead, Larry.
Thank you. And Mayor Shance also had a question. My question was about the trees as well. And how much of a buffer is going to be left between on the east end between the parking lot and say High Street or that community group? Do you have any idea how many trees will be left there for a buffer?
Yeah, I assume this question is directed to myself as well. So we have that 12.25 meter buffer strip in that location. And there are a number of large trees along that buffer strip that will be retained. I would have to look at the maps and and count up to see exactly how many are going to be retained. But yeah, a substantial portion enough that it will be a a good screen. And any areas that that we are that are available, we will also be trying to plant additional trees in there to densify the area.
Okay, thank you. And the other question I had was the fencing. You talked about the existing fencing staying. Is the rest of the property going to be fenced as well? And is that going to be similar to the site upfront or would it be chain link or or no fence at all?
Through you, Councilor Martin, to Councilor Shance. We will be looking at those details. The intent was to make it opaque or so that you couldn't see through it. But I think we need to look at that from township standpoint in terms of what they'd like to see as part of part of that. Sometimes it's both security inside and outside to be able to see through something so that you can understand what's going on on both sides of the fence. So I think we we'd look at that and and consider those through the through the process.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome, Mr. Shance.
Thank you. My question was around trees too. And I actually have answered some of them, but I think my question might be for Mr. Venk. But if I if I may do that, yeah, thanks. They talked about a one-to-one replacement for trees. I thought we had a two-for-one policy. Could you just clarify that for me, please?
Sorry, Mayor Shance, I don't recall off the top of my head the exact ratio, but we would grasp and follow our guidelines. So that's something we would look at implementing through our site plan control, which would follow if they got approvals. We would go through site plan and then verify A that they providing the requirements in terms of the tree replacement plan. So we'd be addressing it at that time, but I don't know offhand. I could provide it the recommendation report.
Super. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Then I have one. Is it possible to use recycled asphalt instead of gravel for a parking lot to control dust? Or could you spray chloride like we do on our country roads? Or is that not permitted because the creek runs reasonably close?
Thank you, Chair Martin. I think if Jim Walls from Burnside is on, I will get him to answer this question. Jim, are you? I see your name.
Hi, this is Jim Walls from Burnside. I'm a geoscientist. I've been working on this property for a number of years. The reason we would be using gravel is because it is a former landfill and we want to maintain water balance. So we don't want to change the amount of water that's infiltrating and and moving through this the subgrade. We also want to use gravel because the former landfill is 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 old now and 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 fairly stable, but it we will get a little bit of frost heaving and things like that. So gravel is is easier to grade and and easier to maintain a surface for the trucks. It also means that you don't have to apply salt or anything in the winter to a gravel parking lot because the trucks can grip it. So we want the parking lot to be exactly the way the existing parking lot is and operates. And the use of a chloride to control dust is, as you mentioned, is something that will then infiltrate into the groundwater, which we don't want to do. The application of asphalt grinding is also something we don't want to do because contaminants wash off asphalt and get into the groundwater. So coarse gravel that doesn't break apart and create a lot of dust is the ideal surface for for this area.
Are there any additional questions? Okay, thank you, Ms. Stellings and Mr. Handy. You may now turn your camera and video off. Next, we'll hear from registered delegations. So first is Cheryl Fisher. Ms. Fisher, please turn your video and microphone on and begin when you are ready. There she is.
Thank you, Counselor Martin or Chair Martin and Mayor Shance and counselors. My concern is, as a resident that's lived in this area for 50 years, 50 plus years, some concerns I just have and questions I have are in regard, again, regards to the trees, but the buffer zone to the south. So the ones that are facing Bolander Park. As Counselor Merlehan mentioned, you know, we are hard pressed for green spaces in this township. And what I want to know is that this area is going to have a significant green zone of buffers of of trees that are going to grow and be able to fill in that fence line. Right now, we have a metal, you know, a kind of a multi-colored metal, very industrial looking fence lines that run around the area. As as the largest park in this town, it would be really great to ensure that people aren't enjoying the facility and looking at, you know, are able to see in any way an industrial area. Also, too, there was mentioned about site specific items. Again, this property is being rented out. There's already two different types of business. What other kind of businesses are going to be a possibility on this site? Are we just looking at trucks? Like what's if the zoning is changed? What are we looking at 10 years or 15 years down the road? We've gone through the salvage yard process. It's noisy, can be dirty. The site is definitely cleaned up compared to what it's looked like in the past, that's for sure. But those are those are some concerns that I have. The easement part of having a trail is wonderful, having watched people struggle back and forth to get through and walk across broken wooden boards to get through the Kissing Bridge Trail. Having that is is absolutely wonderful for the community and for the the local residents as well. So anyway, those are some questions that I have. I don't know who can answer in regards to the trees in specific. And again, the nature of the the businesses.
Jeremy, do you have any answers for Cheryl?
Sure, through you, Mr. Chair. In terms of other uses, the site specific is saying on that portion, they're adding this new piece where they proposed the trailer parking. It would be limited to trailer parking, truck and trailer parking. So no other uses would be permitted at this time without an amendment to the zoning in the future. So a specific to that use on that back portion. The front portion is still in an M1 zone. We're not changing that. So other uses can take place there in the building that would meet zoning. That could happen. But we are removing the auto recycling portion out of the site specific. So that will no longer be permitted in the future. In terms of the buffer and adding trees, as you've heard, there's a number of trees that may be removed and they have to plant more. So that open space section between Bolander and that fence is probably the well, it's one of the biggest areas we can see trees to be planted. So that would probably get heavily planted appropriately. So with native trees to kind of add some additional offering in that locate. That's probably most logical. You'll see a whole bunch of trees go in. So through the site plan process, they'd be planting more trees in that location if they do get to remove any of those trees. I think that answers most of the questions, comments, or just the comments to those questions.
Thank you.
Questions for Ms. Fisher? Seeing none, thank you again, Ms. Fisher. Please turn your video and microphone off now. Next, we will hear from Anne Kendall. Please turn your V.
Hello, and thank you, Chair Martin, Mayor Shance, councilors and other attendees for this opportunity. I've actually written comments, so I'm going to read, although some of the, some of my concerns have sort of been addressed, but there are some concerns that I really have about this zone change application. I live at Seven Charles Street. My neighborhood is a small division in Northeast Elmira. The neighborhood is bounded by industrial land on three sides. You saw that from the map that was up on the PowerPoint. We have the Langsas Chemical Facility to the south, the Elmira Pet Food Plant and BioN Power Facility to the north. And the property in question is to the west of our neighborhood. We've had a lot of issues over the years with industrial properties that surround us. In particular, we've been subjected to odor and particulate concerns from the north and from the south. And with longstanding issues with water and land contamination from the south. Additionally, with the expansion of the Elmira Pet Food and the opening of the BioN Power Plant, we have experienced a significant and rapid increase in large truck traffic on Church Street East to the south of our neighborhood, on Arthur Street North to the west, and on the industrial properties to the north of our neighborhood. It's that increase in truck traffic that really concerns me with this particular zone zone change application. The land called open space on the official plan is an important visual and sound barrier between our neighborhood and the traffic and industrial operations that surround us. This application suggests that the owners wish to increase the large truck traffic coming onto the property. This will increase noise, light and air pollution in our neighborhood. The proposed amendment indicates that the owners wish to extend the commercial operation to within a few meters of residential properties on High Street, separated by a small easement. While I'm hopeful that an easement agreement can be made with the township so that our neighborhood can continue to have access to the Kissing Bridge Trail, which runs along the north end of our properties, I am concerned that we will be subjected to loud noises and noxious fumes from the dozens of trucks and trailers that could be accommodated on this large property. And I did a quick count when the PowerPoint was up and it looks like there's about 115 parking spaces on that property. And I would really, when I'm finished, I'd like to hear what how close I am with that number. Additionally, increases in large truck traffic moving to and from the property will impact road infrastructure leading into and out of Elmira, putting additional pressure on roads which are already in need of repair. This so-called open space is home to plants, birds and small animals, all of which help to support a fragile ecological balance in this area of the township. As the land in this application borders on the Canada Jug Creek and he spills from vehicles using this land as a parking and storage area will threaten the health of a waterway that has already borne significant chemical pollution. My biggest concern, though, is with the increased truck traffic my neighborhood will experience as a result of this zone change application. I ask you, please, to carefully consider the size, scope and possible detrimental outcomes to my neighborhood, to other neighbors and to other residents of Elmira will be affected by this zone change application. Thank you.
Committee members, do you have any questions? Seeing none. Thank you again, Ms. Kendall. Please turn your video and microphone off. Next, we will hear from Barry Lovchesky. Barry, you can turn your video on and your microphone on and begin when you are ready.
Yes, good evening. I think we had prematurely shut Anne off. I think she wanted to say a couple more things. Is that true, Anne?
Well, I did wonder if my count of parking spaces was reasonably accurate. Thank you.
Jeremy, can you answer that, please?
I'm not sure I can answer. I haven't counted the parking spaces that have been shown at this point yet. So maybe the applicant has that number.
Does the applicant have that number for us? You?
Thank you, Chair Martin. I just did some quick calculations. We haven't looked at that in detail. But a quick count on the new area was 69 spaces I showed. And then 26. 36. So that would 69 plus 36, around 105. So I think that's Kendall, that's about what you counted?
I I I thought there were about 115. So we're a little
Yeah, it could be. That was my quick, quick, quick math. So
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Barry, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. Delegates and council and mayor and all my fellow neighbors. Cheryl to my west and Anne to my south. I am a neighbor in the High Street community, not High Street neighborhood. And I would like to echo actually a lot of what Anne had stated. The increased truck idling in the area The increased truck uh, idling in the area or truck traffic. I also feel that if we're going to have additional traffic in the area, we're going to have additional pollutants, whether it be um, solvents from the vehicles, whether it'll be pollution, air pollution. We've, in our area, uh, our neighborhood, the High Street neighborhood, we often feel forgotten because uh, of, we're a little bit isolated. We're on the other side of the creek. And uh, we are battling with some of the other industrial uses in our area here to uh, our north. And as Ann said to our south, and now this is to the west, and perhaps potentially doubling the size of the parking lot there. I, I am concerned that the buffer seems very minimal. So that when we've got parkland used to the south of the existing property, that uh, yes, as Cheryl had iterated, that we would have um, possible, we'd possibly be able to see, hear, smell, whatever um, that, that zone. And from my area, so I am on High Street, so I'm to the east of that particular spot. And if we only have a, whatever it was, a ten, a ten-meter buffer from the area, which is actually part of the easement, if I understood things correctly, um, that seems fairly minimalist as well. And I think it's a, it's a well-known fact that, that our vegetation, our trees, our flora in the area, it absorbs pollutants, it absorbs sound, it takes care of uh, some of the particulate matter. All things that we're concerned about in our area. And then I wanted to echo what councillor Merlehan had stated about removing an open space, removing an open space and turning it into an industrial lands. That kind of seems to go counter to the way that we want to move. Uh, we are a neighborhood in the area, so we've got uh, community of residents living to the east of this property and those who are kind of to the south, and then we have some a little bit to the northwest of the area. It sure seems counter to potentially double the size of uh, an area where it'll be used for industrial purposes when, when we probably shouldn't be mixing industrial and residential. And again, taking an open space uh, zoning and putting in an industrial seems, it seems counter, it seems going in the wrong direction. And in a time when we want to all be going in the right direction, I, I'm not so sure this is the way we should be going. And I'd, I'd like, I'd like this to be considered. So thanks for the opportunities here. Thank you.
Thank you, Barry. Um, committee members have any, Council Shants?
Yes, uh, thank you. And I think this, uh, to you, I think this should be for Mr. Vink. Um, and the uh, the truck, truck traffic that has been mentioned with the last two delegates. Uh, do we typically not have a traffic study done for something like this, or is that normal?
So through Mr. Chair to councillor Shants, uh, it's not necessary that we will have a traffic study. The applicant has provided some numbers in their planning report outlining that there are limited trucks per hour because it's mostly just storage and hooking up and pulling out the truck. I think they said a truck an hour is that, that's what they're averaging uh, during the daytime hours, what they're suggesting. So um, it is something that will be reviewed by staff to determine if there's any discrepancies. But when we're talking trucking yards, it's not uncommon that there's just a lot of trailers there and then just moving in and out of the site occasionally. So they've shown, like I said, one truck an hour is the estimate.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Go on to Merlehan.
Yeah, thank you through you to Mr. Vink. Um, I'm wondering if uh, the new uh, space there, that they're looking to, would they be allowed to um, like, take on like, just storages and like general storage or trailers or people's vehicles and things like that, or is it very specific to just these types of transport trucks?
So I asked through you, Mr. Chair to councillor Merlehan, the proposal at this point is for transport trucks and trailers, associated trailers. And the site specific, if it's worded that way, would be that specific. Uh, it would have to be generalized to allow additional storage of anything else if that was to allow, be allowed to take place. So it's something that's not off the table under the review necessarily, but it's not proposed at this time and wasn't being considered.
Okay, and if I could just have one other question about uh, uh, open space. Um, are there any um, like special requirements because it's open spaces? Is it, I always thought it was considered kind of special and uh, very hard to transform into something uh, different, especially in industrial use. And that was, you know, from a, a number of years ago, different situation. And, and now it just seems like, oh, you could just go through the process and, and change it. And I, like, I guess I, I'm wrong in that, my initial assessment, but uh, can you explain if there are any uh, any things in the Planning Act to protect open space?
So through you, Chair again to councillor Merlehan. So in the provincial policies and our regional official and township official plan, it doesn't prohibit the conversion of open space to something else. So open space is meant to be to protect natural features, natural hazards. So we're talking like wetlands and uh, steep slopes and creeks and that kind of thing. So those are open things we put into an open space. Uh, and then areas where we don't want to see development take place of some form. So and potentially, this may be where the history came in, is maybe at the time they didn't want the gra, the landfill to be developed. Uh, so they put an open space designation on it without understanding the needs or values. Doesn't mean you can't convert. It doesn't mean you can't utilize open space. It's just that you would have to do that. And that's what they've done, these studies on the environmental side, saying, is it a wetland? Is it an environmental feature that needs to be protected? It's not. Uh, it's not showing that in the studies. It is a former landfill. And we've got, like the consultant mentioned, a lot of uh, non-native invasive species that have grown on the site over time. So it is kind of an industrial use underlying because that old landfill sitting there. So looking at those policies, can you convert it? Is the opportunity there? If there's opportunity for development and utilizing existing lands and intensifying and lands within an urban area, the possibility exists to do a conversion. And we see that here and there. It's not common. You're right, it is not common. But sometimes we do see that shift in those boundaries where an open space is and isn't because we didn't realize the environmental feature was there, wasn't there over time or things like that. So you will see things occasionally change in terms of environmental open spaces, but that's where these studies come in. And they're telling us whether that's appropriate or not. Is there anything there to protect as an open space?
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none. Thank you, Barry. You can now turn your microphone and video off. I will now ask the clerk if there are any unregistered participants in the meeting for this report.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, there are no additional speakers tonight.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Smith. There being no further speakers, I declare the public meeting to be closed. Next, we'll go to presentations. We have with us tonight Sharon Daniel and Mike Henderson from the region of Waterloo to present the region's two thousand twenty-two ten-year transportation capital program for Woolwich. Ms. Daniel and Mr. Henderson, please turn your videos and microphone, phones on and you can begin your presentation when you are ready.
Thank you, Chair Martin. Uh, through you, Chair Martin, we'd like to first say thank you for the invitation uh, to Woolwich Council and, and staff for the invitation uh, for us to come out and share our, our draft uh, two thousand and twenty-three TCP. Uh, my name is Mike Henderson. I'm the manager of transportation program development in our transportation division uh, in our, in the Department of Transportation Environmental Services. That kind of frames the context of, of, of where Sharon and I work and reside. Uh, just to give you just a quick background, I'm not going to steal any of Sharon's thunder here, but our group kind of has stewardship uh, over most of the regional infrastructure on the right of ways that you're seeing. So roads, bridges, storm sewers, that kind of stuff. We have an infrastructure group. We're comprised of three groups, an infrastructure group, uh, the transportation capital program group, which Sharon is head of, uh, that looks at preparing the ten-year capital forecast. And finally, but uh, not insignificantly, our program develop or a project development team, which kind of provides scope for all of the projects in the ten-year capital program. So kind of what is the TCP? Well, it's kind of divided into studies, maintenance and annual programs, basically rehabilitation and reconstruction. Uh, it's divided into sort of two areas, our base program, which is tax-based, and our expansion program, uh, which is development-driven, master plan-driven and funded by uh, our development community. So that kind of frames some of the context. Uh, with that, I'll turn it over to Sharon to share with you uh, the transportation capital program, the draft one. Uh, what we're showing here is basically a regurgitation of what happened in two thousand twenty-two, but it's preparing us in sort of the initial stages for our two thousand twenty-three development. Uh, so with that, I'll turn it over to Sharon. If you have any specific, I would just ask specific project questions. Uh, I would refer you to the project managers that are working on these projects. They're gonna have more of the details. Certainly Sharon and I may have some updates from some of the more recent projects. Uh, but if you have really specific questions about the projects themselves, I direct you to the project managers. You're probably gonna get a more holistic answer. So with that, thank you again. Uh, Sharon, over to you.
Thank you, Mike. Through you, Chair Martin, to council and ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much for inviting us to present the region's two thousand twenty-two ten-year transportation capital program. The purpose of this presentation is to give you an overview of how we develop the regional transportation capital program. We call it the TCP. Things we consider during the budget process. And then I'll go on to highlight some of the transportation projects we have planned between two thousand twenty-two and two thousand thirty-one in the township of Woolwich. We'll start with what is the region's transportation capital program. The TCP is a document that we build every year and it shows what projects have been determined, the timing of those projects and their estimated budgets and their funding sources. The project is, the document is divided into two main focus areas. We have our base program, which contains all our rehabilitation and reconstruction for existing regional roads and some of our annual programs. And then we have our expansion program, which is building the new road, regional roads that expand our network. And we have existing road, regional roads that we're widening. So we are increasing capacity of existing roads. In order to determine what the scope is for a project and how we prioritize them, we look at the pavement and bridge condition assessments. We look at underground infrastructure condition assessments, safety related improvements, such as our annual collision monitoring program, capacity deficiencies, active transportation needs, which is our sidewalks, multi-use trails and cycling facilities and any development-related projects. Once we've determined the projects themselves, every year we meet with the area municipalities. For example, we meet with Jared Popey and we go over every project that is planned for the next ten years and ask if the area municipalities have any infrastructure needs. Then we coordinate the regional projects with the area municipality projects in order to determine and manage tran, uh, traffic, determine utility requirements, any transit development and active transportation needs. Once we've kind of coordinated and wrapped all this stuff up, we then shoehorn all our projects into our budget envelopes for each year and the TCP is completed. This process was done last year and the two thousand twenty-two TCP was built. The following are the planned projects within the ta, the township of Woolwich. This map gives you a visual of all the projects within the township that is planned between two thousand twenty-two and two thousand thirty-one. I know it's all really, really tiny. I apologize for that, but that's how we've got to fit it all into one map. These are the projects that we have within Elmira itself. The next few slides will show you a list of the projects that we have. Under, under our urban rehabilitation and resurfacing projects, we have two projects within the next five years and we have three between two thousand twenty-seven and two thousand thirty-one. Under rural rehabilitation for the next five years, we have four projects planned. And there are sixteen projects planned between two thousand twenty-seven and two thousand thirty-one. And this is the list of them along with their budgets and the lengths and the construction years. Under reconstruction, we have six projects planned for the next five years and we have three planned between two thousand twenty-seven and two thousand thirty-one. Under bridge and covert rehabilitation, there are seven projects budgeted for the next ten years. Under intersection improvements, road expansion and studies, we have one study, which is Elmira bypass. We have one expansion project and threes, and sorry, and five standalone intersection improvement projects planned. I'll now go over some of the projects that are within the next five years. The first project we have is Arthur Street Sandy Hills Drive to Waterloo Wellington boundary. This is a rural resurfacing project. The project started in two thousand twenty-one and so far, all the ditching, guide rails, storm sewers, culverts and bridge rehabilitation has been completed. Most of the base asphalt has been completed except for a short section. The surface asphalt is still needed for the entire project. Work is expected to start in late April and be completed in July. The next project is Sawmill Road River Street to Snyder's Flat Road. It's a reconstruction and intersection improvement project. The project is going to tender this week. The neck, the first phase is from River Road to Saint Charles to be constructed in two thousand twenty-two. The second phase is from Saint Charles to Snyder Flats Road to be constructed in two thousand twenty-three. The intersection of Sawmill and Saint Charles will be signalized and operational in two thousand twenty-three. Church Street from Spruce Lane to Arthur Street. This is a reconstruction project and is being constructed in two phases. Phase one is from Arthur Street to Duke Street, starting in May. Phase two is from Duke Street to two hundred and seventy meters east of Spruce Lane in two thousand twenty-three. We have Arthur Street, South Street to Kenning Place. This project is a major resurfacing project. It is in its preliminary design stage where different cross-sections are being evaluated. The project team meeting will take place shortly with the first public consultation meeting currently scheduled for May. There might be potential for the project to be delayed if there is determined that there's a need to acquire property, but that's something that they're trying to figure out during the preliminary design stage. Mary Hill Road, seventy meters east of Notre Dame Avenue to Saint Charles Street West is a project that's a reconstruction project and is scheduled for two thousand twenty-four. It ha, it includes the removal and combining of the region and township storm sewers. This is a cost-sharing project with the township, uh, with the township. Church Street West from Arthur Street to Eagle Avenue uh, is a reconstruction project. Design work is to start in two thousand twenty-three with construction to take place in two thousand twenty-five. Line eighty-six Northfield Drive East to Spruce Lane is a rural resurfacing project. The design work is to start in two thousand twenty-four with construction to take place in two thousand twenty-five. Next, we have our bridge rehabilitation projects. The first one is the rehabilitation of Northfield Drive, the Conestoga Lake. This is a full bridge replacement project. The first public consultation was held in two thousand twenty-one and the next one will be in the spring of two thousand twenty-two. Detailed design is taking place in two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-three with construction over the next two years in two thousand twenty-four and two thousand twenty-five. For West Montrose and the Arthur Street Bridge, I don't have a lot of information at this time. But if anyone has questions, I can definitely follow up with the project managers and get back to you. In terms of the study, we have the Elmira bypass. There's a request for proposal, which was, which was released for a consultant. And the approval for this selection will take place in June. The detailed design will start in July with the traffic analysis report and environmental background review to take place by the end of two thousand twenty-two, early two thousand twenty-three, to identify needs and justification for a bypass road. The EA is anticipated to be completed in two thousand twenty-four. And that concludes our presentation. Does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, committee members have any questions? Um, can we get rid of that, um, sharing the screen so I can see people?
Yes, sorry about that.
Yes, it's coming. Here we are. Mayor Shants.
Thank you, and uh, thank you to uh, Sharon and Mike for.
Sharon and Mike for, for coming tonight and, and going over this. Um, a couple of questions. Um, one, one thing that um, came to mind as you were going through things. That there's a section of Arthur Street from Kenning to um, I, I think it went to uh, church. I'm not sure, but um, and, and then is, is that tied into the EA for the bypass at all? Uh, because I, I think at different times we talked about that um, area as possibly being um, affected by a bypass. So I just wonder about the timing on that one. And, and if that was considered.
All right, was that on um, Arthur Street itself?
I believe so, yeah.
Are the she cutting to church?
Yeah.
I know we have a project uh, planned.
I think it was scheduled for twenty twenty three, so I just want to make sure that that the pieces are all considered together. That's all.
Through you Chair Martin, we'll, we'll, we'll find out that information and get back to you Mayor Shans.
Okay, I see Mr. Pupayas is, is uh, Hollywood Square on.
So you Chair Martin to uh, Mayor Shans, at thi- at this point, it is uh, lumped into the Arthur Street reconstruction project, but it's not to say that the EA may not uh, overlap. Um, I think that um, we would expect really Arthur, that Arthur Street to be broken up into a couple of phases as Sharon pointed out this evening. Um, but right now it's lumped into the overall Arthur Street project to go from church up to Kenning Place.
Okay, I wouldn't want to delay that, but I just want to make sure that all the pieces are, are still in, in play and in consideration. Um, and one more question, if I could, Mr. Chair. Bike lanes, can, can you tell me, I, I, I've driven up Arthur Street North um, and then part of that, that is done um, are, are the bike lanes wide enough for a buggy? That, that's a consideration I've mentioned before at, at Regional Council that um, when, when you put in bike lanes here, they need to be wide enough for a buggy because the buggy won't go half on the road and half on the pavement. They'll either need to be all on the gravel or all on the pavement and, and so if the lane isn't wide enough, the buggy will still be on the road.
Um, through you, I'll take this one. Through you uh, Chair Martin uh, to Mayor Shans. Every, every project team uh, is going to make that uh, decision during the project design deliberations during the EA phase. And certainly all of our project managers are well aware of, of the buggy requirements locally. So I, I would, I would just ask that you, you know, if, we can follow up on that again specifically, but I, I am fully aware uh, being a project manager myself in the design and construction division for almost twelve years that this is something that is, is known to the project managers. So we will be building in uh, the best biking facility we can put in now, which is, is separated uh, from, from traffic and we will be considering the needs of the buggies and all, really all mode users. So that's going to be part of the project team deliberation. So to get you a specific answer, uh, we can follow up on that, but I can tell you with complete certainty that that is considered by all of the PMs when doing any projects in this area.
Okay, thank you. That's what I was told at Regional too. I was just, when I was driving by, I thought hmm, that looks a little narrow. So um, if you could follow up on that one, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? Council McMillan?
If Counselor Shans beat me to the draw, he was first, if you want to go to ensure.
I have a couple of questions. So what is, uh, I've been advocate, advocating for conduit being put in uh, for fiber when we do uh, major road reconstructions. It's not quite as important out in the rural areas, but when we get into the urban areas, um, I was wondering why we don't do that because uh, that, that is the cheapest time to do that.
Uh, through you Chair Martin uh, to, to Counselor Shans. Yeah, it's, it's done in every single project. Uh, Counselor Shans, uh, again, the PMs are going to be coordinating with the uh, utility companies to see what needs are, what the needs are. They're going to be coordinating with our own traffic people. Uh, we more than uh, uh, more than not put in extra conduit, conduits for things like streetlights, traffic lights, data uh, connections. So there, uh, that is being done. And that process starts right from the uh, from the PDR stage, which is in my group. We would have, we would have people check into the needs uh, when the, when the construction is, is time to take place. So we're going to consult with all of the utility companies to see what needs there are for conduit as well as uh, talking to our own traffic staff to see if there's, if there's needs for cable there. So it's certainly the time it gets done and it gets done uh, usually about every time on a reconstruction project.
Yeah, I, I talk more specific, even if it doesn't need it at the time, why we wouldn't bury some of that uh, just for future possibilities.
Through you Chair Martin, again, I, I would reiterate that, that there is, there's always some uh, uh, extra conduit that's put in by the utility companies for such purposes. So there's not too many times, uh, especially in the reconstructions that have been done, certainly in the last ten to twenty years where we're not putting in conduit that yeah, should be put in. For instance, if it's underneath concrete, for sure. Uh, we pay a lot of attention, attention to that. Uh, sometimes uh, conduits are not put in uh, where there's a situation where there's a, a grass boulevard. So it would be easier to put it in after. But certainly when we're in any kind of an urban environment and uh, most of the infrastructure is buried, they look at that very closely. And there is additional capacity in most cases on uh, on bell, on fiber, on uh, our signal cables, all of that stuff.
Thank you. And if I could follow up with one more question, um, and uh, this pertains to roundabouts and uh, and lighting uh, that typically goes in a few years ahead of the roundabout. Why would we have that throwaway cost if we know there's going to be a roundabout placed in that intersection in the near future? Why wouldn't we just start working on the roundabout design right off the uh, right at the beginning of the uh, construction?
Uh, through you uh, Chair Martin, I'm not sure if I completely understand your question, Counselor Shans. Are you suggesting that uh, we're putting in lights before a roundabout is constructed? And why are we doing that?
Yeah, so a prime example is uh, we've got one at the end of um, uh, Sawmill Road and uh, oh boy, now the name escapes me coming out of Breslau.
EB Crest.
EB Crest, thank you. Uh, we just put the lights in there in the past couple of years and it's slated for a roundabout in the next couple of years. And I'm wondering why we do have that throwaway cost.
Sorry, through you, through you. So we're talking about signaling an intersection. Okay, sorry. Now, now I understand your question. Um, it's based on warrants, uh, quite honestly. So roundabouts take time to build. There's usually uh, property acquisition with them. It takes a bit of time to go through the EA process. Uh, sometimes that process can take two to five years uh, before we're able to acquire the land and, and ultimately get the roundabouts built. So a roundabout is, or signals uh, versus just a uh, I'll call it a sign controlled intersection. Those are all based on warrants and they're based on our collision statistics. Uh, we have an annual road safety program that we, we spend about four hundred thousand dollars on annually to look at, at uh, uh, not only educate the public, but look at problem intersections in addition to reviewing our collision statistics. So the real answer is to us, it's not uh, it's not throwaway. Uh, we want to address if there is a problem with safety for sure. Uh, we want to address that in the safest possible manner. So if we believe uh, signaling the intersection is going to help from a, a capacity standpoint or a safety standpoint, then we'll do it in advance. Uh, but that's all based on warrants and it's based on statistics. And you know, real specific questions on that, uh, we can certainly uh, forward you to, to Bob Henderson, our manager of traffic engineering as well that would probably give you a more thorough uh, answer, but that's it in a nutshell.
Okay, thank you.
Council McMillan?
Thank you, Chair Martin. Through you, um, slide twenty three. Ms. Daniel talked about uh, the EA for the bypass and the widening and talking about that EA providing the justification for the widening and for the bypass. I was wondering if you could help me understand a little bit better what the metrics are uh, for both of those. I assume they'd be considered as two separate issues, even if the EA is done at the same time. And what would be the metrics that would provide the justification for a widening or for a bypass?
Through you Chair Martin, I, I would suggest uh, to get the answers you want to get. Uh, I would suggest speaking to our manager of transportation planning, uh, Counselor McMillan. They'd be able to give you uh, a more thorough review, but any, any of the projects in our widening or expansion side of the program, they're driven uh, by capacity issues and trying to improve traffic flow, trying to improve efficiency of trips uh, between destinations, origins and destinations. So it's all based on the data coming from our transportation master plan related to capacity. And when I say capacity, it's important to note that we're not just building our network out with vehicular capacity. We're taking a, a close look at that moving into the future as well. Uh, but we're also building capacity with our entire active transportation network. So let's cycling lanes, pedestrian facilities, it's connecting GRT, it's connecting GRT to the LRT. I know it's not out in the, in the township yet, but it, it's looking at it holistically like that. So those are the kind of questions directly related to this study and this EA that you're probably going to be best served going, going right to the manager of transportation planning. I would suggest talking to Cornell Musi. And we can forward that contact information uh, to you through Chairman.
Thank you for that. Chair Martin, quick follow up?
Yeah.
So I, I appreciate that answer and I'm, I'm more than happy to wait to, to speak to uh, to other people um, and, and get uh, further follow up. I, I just would maybe like to add, I, I certainly understand the capacity question. I'm happy to hear you talk about the capacity of all transportation and not just single use vehicle, uh, automobile traffic. Um, the reason why I'm particularly asking about this is because the capacity for the widening makes sense. X number of cars per hour on a given lane, we need to expand the lanes if, if there's more. Uh, but I think there's other issues with the bypass surrounding things like commercial traffic in the, in the Elmira core and the, the commercial viability of the Elmira core and, and how that's improved by a bypass, which maybe the absolute capacity of the highway doesn't necessarily dictate a bypass, but other issues like uh, the commercial viability of the Elmira core would be a, a significant factor. So that's where that question's coming from.
Uh, through you Chair Martin, those are tricky, tricky questions, Counselor McMillan, but they're all very important things to understand. And uh, that will certainly be part of uh, the EA process. Uh, always looking at, at impact uh, when we divert traffic. Uh, divert all modes of traffic. So um, yes, that should be something directed to the manager of transportation uh, in the transportation division. Uh, they'll give you excellent answers and uh, you can be sure that they'll be very thorough in looking into all of those issues.
Perfect. Thanks very much.
Counselor um, Mc- Merlehan?
Yeah, thank you. Um, through you to uh, I guess either, uh, either of you. I'm looking at the uh, uh, bridge rehab page. Um, and one bridge that I see missing um, is uh, the church and um, church over, over Canoga Jig. Uh, it's kind of a, I guess a bit of a sister bridge to the, to the one on Arthur Street that's uh, that's getting um, I guess rehab. Um, I'm on the regional project team for pretty much most of the Elmira projects and, and um, at one of our meetings that this, the second bridge was identified as, as needing work and it's, I guess, a, a similar vintage as the uh, uh, the Arthur Street one. So I, I'm wondering if if that is on the books or, or you're, you're not sure.
Sharon, do you want to take this one?
Yeah, I was just trying to find it in our, um, could you tell me what, sorry, through you Chair Martin. Um, sorry, Counsel, could you just tell me what the name of that project was?
Um, okay, that would be uh, it's in two phases. So it's Arthur uh, to um, the edge of town, like past Spruce Lawn. Um, it would be the second, it would be in the second phase, so twenty twenty three. Uh, Duke Street then uh, and the bridge right there. There was apparently going to be some efficiencies by, by making it a, a two-phase and then having the bridge work being done at the same time as, as the other one is what I understood at the time.
So I do have a project, uh, Arthur Street at Cana, Canaga. I can't pronounce that word. I do have a, I do have a brick, bridge project there, which is in twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four. Um, so that I can, and then the other one. I mean, there's a lot of projects. I didn't put everything in the presentation. I just highlighted some of the ma- the major ones. So yeah, I did find that one. Sorry, I missed the other one you were asking me about.
Um, that's okay. That was just the one that I was, uh, just because I sit on it and I, and I thought maybe I didn't understand the project. So um, okay, so in that same project though, um, uh, I'm going to take an, another opportunity to advocate for uh, crosswalks. Um, you talk about warrants and, and signalized lighting and stuff at, at different areas. And we have a, a Bullwinder Park uh, there with a splash pad that is uh, pretty, it's really active now. Um, and uh, I've been on the project now for, I want to say three or four years uh, and uh, not having any luck at uh, having uh, a crosswalk uh, at the Duke Street to get people across the park and it's very busy there um, with the traffic coming into town. So anything else I can say to uh, change things around, um, I don't know what at this point. I can start throwing my desk around here or something if that, if that, if that helped.
Through you Chair Martin, uh, we don't, we don't want you throwing your desk around. Merlehan, um, we can, you know, we can follow up with transportation, uh, transportation's traffic engineering staff. I'm happy to follow up with you regarding, you know, how we, how we develop where those things go. It's more than you know, I, I don't want to use the, the generic term warrants. Uh, it's more than, you know, the number of people crossing. It's the frequency, it's the location, the proximity to intersections. Uh, do we want people to encourage, encourage people to cross there? There's several issues relating to traffic uh, uh, safety uh, that are probably well worth a discussion again with our manager of traffic engineering, Mr. Bob Henderson. So I can certainly make a note and connect you to him and uh, it doesn't mean that the uh, the advocating is done. But again, we don't, we, we have to have warrants and we have to have policy uh, such that we're, I guess we're practicing it consistently across the regional road network system. It doesn't mean that some don't fall through the cracks. It doesn't mean that some shouldn't have a se- a second look taken at them. And we can certainly commit to that. And uh, if you'd like, we'll follow up with uh, with Mr. Henderson, have him get back to you on on uh, the rationale for the decision that's been made.
Okay, I'd be uh, happy to have that conversation. Thank you.
Council McMillan?
Uh, thanks Chair Martin, uh, through you. Just to kind of piggyback on what Counselor Merlehan was talking about and, and some of the uh, answer and, and some of the uh, input that we've had here tonight. We've talked a lot about multimodal transportation. I think, I think it's important to have those warrants so that there is some consistency uh, across the region on how these things are implemented. I think some of the, some of the barriers that we've run into are guidelines that exist from a time when our transportation approach wasn't as holistic as the one that you've advocated for tonight. So things like there can't be a crosswalk within X number of meters of a traffic signal because we can't slow traffic down that much. And there's not as much of a consideration for the community and how that community gets connected to the park and, and that kind of thing. So um, not really a question, just a comment that um, to kind of support Counselor Merlehan with his frustration, we're, we're running into those barriers that exist from archaic guidelines that, that don't represent the holistic approach that's been, that's been talked about here tonight. I'm happy to take feedback on that. If I'm out to, if I'm out to lunch on that, I, I, I take the feedback, but that's the frustration that we feel, you know, that of the barriers that we've run into.
Through you uh, through you Chair Martin, uh, I'm, I'm certainly not going to tell you Counselor McMillan that you're out to lunch. But I, I would, I would uh, share with you that uh, it, it, it's, it's not so much archaic guidelines uh, that are have, are, or have been the issue. It's the active transportation, um, preferred facilities are quickly evolving. There, i- in my time as a project manager, uh, to where we are now, there's been drastic changes in how we approach active transportation, how we approach the facility, how we approach the design, how we handle the maintenance of those facilities, finding out the true cost of those facilities. So there's lots of things in play, I think, that, uh, are not related to, uh, um, outdated standards. It's more related to the complexities of regional roads that have a lot of things going on. Uh, we're dealing with multimodal needs. So we're dealing with pedestrians, people walking, we're dealing with people cycling. We're dealing with heavy trucks in some cases. We're dealing with large volume of cars in some cases. We're dealing with safety issues. Uh, we're dealing with multimodal, sometimes cross competing needs. So I, I, you know, that's the bigger challenge, uh, Counselor McMillan. So, uh, we hear you and, uh, certainly, uh, we'll leave those, uh, channels of information open so that you can, you can talk to the people you need to talk to. But that's more of what's going on.
Thanks, I appreciate that.
I'm sure the region will work it out. And I know one thing, they're not going to put a crosswalk on the, at the bottom of a hill. So we'll have to find a new location if we want to crosswalk. Are there any further questions? Seeing none, thank you again, Ms. Daniel and Ms. Henderson for your presentation this evening. You can shut your microphones off and your vi- video off. Next, delegations. We're going to deal with our noise bylaw review. Before we hear from registered delegations, Jeff, Clerk Jeff Smith and Municipal Bylaw Enforcement Officer Vanessa Albanis, I here this evening to write an overview of their report to council. Um, please begin when you are ready.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, uh, just before, uh, Officer Vanessa Albanis, uh, starts her presentation, I wanted to provide some extra context for council. Uh, so first I wanted to recognize, uh, the impact of COVID-19. Uh, many staff in the township were quickly to respond to the, uh, changes that people were experiencing over the pandemic, uh, from entertaining more outdoors to allowing businesses to continue operating on temporary patios. And while the bylaw, um, the proposed bylaw isn't specifically focused on COVID, uh, rather COVID has prompted us to make updates sooner that we were already thinking, uh, needed to be looked at. In terms of the updates we were looking at, uh, what we wanted to do was make small incremental improvements rather than a complete overhaul or major changes to our existing processes. Um, the proposals that staff did have, uh, we wanted to bring those to the community, uh, for feedback. And we did that through the survey. And we're happy to see a high number of survey responses and, uh, as well as engagement at tonight's meeting. Um, regardless of what council does tonight, uh, regarding the draft bylaw, uh, bylaw enforcement staff are already working to improve our response to noise complaints, uh, using our existing resources. And, uh, we were, we will be making two notable changes. Uh, so the first is providing notice when exemptions are issued. That was something in the past we had asked, um, either businesses or, or property owners who, uh, were getting the noise exemption to do that. And, uh, bylaw enforcement will be taking on that, uh, responsibility as well as scheduling shifts, uh, enforcement shifts when an exemption is issued, uh, particularly when they're, uh, either after, after hours, so at night or on the weekends. Uh, that was something we hadn't done in the past, but it's something, um, we've talked a lot about recently I, in our violent, violent enforcement division. Um, and that's something we, we already have started. So I, I hope residents and, uh, and businesses already, uh, see an improvement to, uh, to the service that bylaws providing. Um, the, the bylaw that we're proposing, uh, and Officer Albanis is going to present to you, hopefully, uh, most people in the community see it as, as further changes. Uh, sorry, further improvements. So I, I will now turn the floor over to Officer Albanis.
Thank you, Jeff, um, through Chair Martin. Let me just, uh, share my screen here so you guys can see my presentation. Okay. So to start with, the current noise bylaw, uh, was last reviewed in 2017. The purpose of the changes, um, purpose of the current review is to make improvements, um, that we have found in the past couple of years. Uh, to give the officers, enforcement officers more efficient tools, uh, in clear directions when they perform their duties. Uh, in the past three years, noise complaints, uh, were consistently ranked in the top three, uh, complaints received by enforcement services. Our public consultation, uh, and feedback opportunities, uh, staff met with members from the St. Jacobs BIA. The proposed changes were outlined in the survey. The survey was made available from February 4th to, uh, the 18th and advertised on the township website, the World's Observer, uh, through social media. And paper copies, uh, were made available through the administration office. Our respondents that provided their contact information are received notice of this meeting, uh, and will receive and will be notified of, uh, council's decision. Uh, we received a total of 361 surveys that were completed and 112 written comments. Some common themes emerged, uh, from the written comments regarding train and airport noise. Uh, noise from trains, um, and airplanes are fed, uh, federally regulated. So the township wouldn't get involved with that. Uh, noise from fireworks, uh, that would require a separate review of the fireworks bylaw, um, which can be done at a later date. Uh, snow removal, uh, when it, when it is occurring at night and early mornings. The township currently doesn't regulate snow removal and we don't plan to. Um, most regional and municipal snow removal operations occur at that time, um, because of the reduced, uh, pedestrian traff, and, uh, traffic. Uh, the noise bylaw exemption applications, uh, noise exemptions in St. Jacobs that negu- negatively affect the enjoyment of residential property. Um, there's some concerns regarding that going forward. Uh, we will be notifying staff, as Jeff mentioned, um, of each exemption granted. We'll be, uh, sorry, notifying residents of each, uh, each exemption. When a noise exemption is issued, officers will tend to evaluate the noise. After our source, uh, after hours enforcement, uh, residents want an after-hours enforcement number to call. Uh, staff will increase service where possible, uh, with the existing budget. Uh, the survey question is kind of, uh, like what is reasonable noise? Uh, some people, uh, did not want to hear any noise in their backyard at any time, while others, uh, wanted to enjoy their outdoor space. So an overview of the survey, um, amplified music, uh, 40% uh, agreed with the proposed times, 30 wanted it to stay prohibited. Uh, 21 thought the time should not go as late. Um, we kept the time as is, so it's 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM Sundays through Thursdays and 11:00 PM on Fridays and Saturdays. Construction noise, um, no changes to the proposal, uh, to allow construction noise. So w- we're permitting it on Sundays from 9:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Oh, figuring out what reasonable noise is, getting opinions on, um, what people would consider it to be. 59% of residents thought it would be acceptable, uh, to hear your neighbors outside. 18% didn't want to hear any noise on their property, um, and 9% said it, they could hear it inside. Um, but still have a normal, normal conversation, that would be fine. Uh, while enforcing the proposed no, noise bylaw, uh, we would use discretion to determine what reasonable noise is within reason. Um, you, it's, it's disturbing to hear inside of a detached dwelling, um, with the doors and windows securely shut. The levels of enforcement, uh, 23% wanted officers on call, weekends, and on weekends to respond to noise complaints. Um, you know, we'll do our best. We, we received over 850 complaints in, in 2023. It's been growing every year. Um, an increased level of service requiring officers respond after hours is not feasible at this time. Um, but we'll do our best, um, with our part-time officer, uh, to respond the best that we can. So what are the proposed changes? Uh, the point of reception is defined as any location within a building. Um, unreasonable noise is audible at the point of reception. Um, if it is excessive or interferes with the reasonable enjoyment of property. Uh, any noise, i- this was previously any noise which is clearly audible at the point of reception was very vague. So we changed it to, uh, no person shall create unreasonable noise that is likely to disturb at the point of reception. Um, and then allowing residential construction on Sundays, allowing operation of amplified sound within 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM, uh, during the week and then 11:00 PM on weekends. Uh, noise by law exemptions would allow for multiple applications to be submitted within a one-month period, um, with increased fees. And when we talk about amplified sound, it's not just like live music. It's, it's listening to a, uh, listening to a stereo while you're cleaning your garage right that, right now. That's prohibited at all times, like no amplified sound. So the set fine application, um, so with a new bylaw, uh, the township must apply to the Ministry of Attorney General, uh, for approval of set fine amounts. Um, all the set fine amounts under the existing bylaw were $200. Uh, the fine for unreasonable noise is set higher as a deterrent as well as, um, order to comply in obstructing an officer, um, as it can be used as a tool to promote compliance within the bylaw, the higher fines. So some of the financial implications, um, you know, it's in, in increased service. So, uh, we will monitor the potential impact of the new noise enforcement program uh, to partially offset the additional workload. Staff recommend an increase in fees for profit events and businesses, but, uh, keep the charity and non-for-profit organizations the same. So this shows, um, an increase in, in the number of applications compared to the fee that we would charge for it. So in conclusion, the proposed no bot, noise bylaw has undergo a thorough staff review and public feedback, feedback process as a result of public and internal feedback. Some further joint changes were made. Um, you know, we recommend that council approve noise bylaw and amend the fees in charge as bylaw set out in this report. Thank you.
Thank you, Vanessa. Council members, you have any questions? Counselor Merlehan?
Sorry, uh, yeah, thank you, uh, through you, uh, Chair Martin, uh, to Vanessa. Um, can you, uh, can you tell council, uh, how much would it cost, uh, you're, we're talking about, um, sending out your part-time bylaw officer for anybody that has an exemption? Can you tell me, uh, what the cost is, uh, for that bylaw officer? And for providing notice and any kind of administrative time that is required by, by staff?
Uh, through you, Chair Martin, to, uh, Counselor Merlehan. Um, off the top of my head, I would say it's, it would be approximately in between like a hundred and, a hundred and $30.
Okay, and, and so we're proposing, um, a $60 fee for an exemption and it, it costs us 130. Um, so taxpayers then are, are subsidizing, um, a business enterprise to, to be exempt to create noise in our community. Is that correct?
The fees, the fees are set to be, try to be fair, um, to, cause it's both residential and businesses that would apply for noise exemptions, depending on what they're applying for. But I can pass this on to, uh, to the clerk.
Uh, thanks Vanessa, through you, Counselor Martin, uh, sorry, Chair Martin. Um, we, we did look at increasing the fees, uh, further. Uh, what we wanted to do is provide sort of a slow incremental increase rather than a major, uh, jump to cover all the cost. Uh, but as we noted in the report, um, to, to, uh, Counselor Merlehan's point, uh, this isn't a full cost recovery for those fees. Uh, if council wants us to look at increasing our fees, uh, quicker than what we were proposing, uh, we can look at that.
Okay, yeah, um, I, I, I think the noise exemption really should be, um, I suppose, something for special occasions and, and things like that. And if they're allowed to have, uh, twice a week, up to eight times per week, then pretty much every weekend is a possibility. Um, and I really feel like, uh, we need to be recovering our costs on, on something. We are providing additional service, um, because of this particular exemption. Um, I, I'd like to, I'd like to see that change. Um, and then I guess, uh, I'll leave some of my other comments, but what I was kind of the main one just for now. And then we'll listen to other people's questions and comments. Thank you.
Mayor Shance?
Thank you, um, just, uh, one of the questions, and I'm sure we're going to hear from, um, some of the, the delegations. But one of the, the things that, um, struck me was the number of exemptions. Um, can you just, uh, clarify that? It's like eight ti- I could, I could have an exemption eight times in a month. So did I read that correctly?
Uh, yes, through you, uh, Chair Martin. So we were looking at a maximum of eight exemptions per month, uh, for some businesses. We were having, uh, businesses, um, during the, uh, you know, when they were having patios, did have several exemptions that covered quite long periods. We're hoping that with a combination of the allowing some sort of quiet outdoor amplified music, um, and allowing, um, oh, up to eight fees a month that we, no one would max that.
So why, why did, why are we choosing that? Like I could have Friday and Saturday night all month, right?
I, sorry, yes, uh, through you, um, Count, or Chair Martin, yes, it would allow for that. Uh, now that would be, I, I should also clarify that is how many, um, exemptions someone could apply for. It doesn't necessarily mean that bylaw enforcement staff will grant all the exemptions as requested.
Okay, I'll leave it there. Thanks.
Counselor Shance?
Uh, thank you, uh, through you to Vanessa. How do you, uh, propose notifying the residents, uh, of a noise, um, exemption?
By mail. We would, uh, we would use our mapping system and, and do it by mail.
And is that, uh, also, uh, in your estimate as the cost?
Yes.
And the other question I have is, um, why would we not use a decimal level like Waterloo does?
So, uh, through you, uh, Chair Martin. Um, so the regional Waterloo, uh, does use a decimal system, but they use it more for, uh, consistent noises like, uh, broken air conditioners. Um, when you start to measure, uh, like music, there, it's so, it goes up, it goes down, like it's so infrequent. Um, you have to have an ambient noise study. Um, you need to have expensive equipment, um, up-to-date training. You need to have your machines calibrated quite frequently. Um, it would be good for measuring stationary noises, but not, not necessarily great for measuring like music. Um, if a truck goes by on the downtown core, are you measuring the, the noise of the truck? Or are you measuring the noise of the, of the music? There's just so many variables.
Okay, thank you, and, uh, I'll, I'll leave some questions, but just a comment. And I'm with, uh, Counselor Merlehan and Mayor Shance about the frequency of, of the, uh, number of times that they can make, have an exemption. So I'll, uh, leave it at that.
Any further questions? To the following instructions. Please leave your video and microphone off until you are called on to speak. Each speaker has a maximum of seven minutes. There will be a timer on the screen and you will hear a warning when you have one minute. And when your time is up. Once you are finished, please turn your microphone and camera off again. You may listen into the rest of the meeting or leave when you want. Counsel will hear from speakers and ask questions of clarification. Counsel discussion debate will start when all the speakers on the topic have finished. First, we have Michelle Booth. Please turn your video and microphone on and you can begin when you are ready. Good evening.
Good evening, um, Counselor, Mayor and Chair. My name is Michelle Booth and I'm a resident of St. Jacobs and I am against this proposed noise by law. Um, I know this is a township by law, but I wanted to just give a little bit more information about St. Jacobs. As I know that many of the concerns that have been coming around the current and proposed by law are dealing with St. Jacobs. Um, first, if we look at the staff candidate data, the largest age groups are people in their forties and fifties. Um, and this is in twenty sixteen, so a bunch of us got older in that time. As well as we have a number of people that are in the eighties, nineties and even older. You can tour around in the village and you will see a number of nursing homes, retirement villages, condos for retirement living. We hear from people that they're coming here to retire. They want quiet. A research around this age group is that they are early to rise and early to bed, and there's research to back that up. They need quiet at night. They don't want to be kept up late. Tonight is late for me. This is late to be up. I'm old. I want to go to bed. I don't want noise. If we look at the types of occupations that people in the village work in. We have lots of people in retail, we have uh people in technical, lots of people working in education. And we have a group of people that work in construction, manufacturing, wholesale and health. This is a lot of shift work. These are people that need to get up early in the morning. These people need to go to bed. They don't want noise at night. They want to be able to go to bed at night and sleep and not be um impacted by noise. Um, if I think about the noise by law and think about the purpose of the noise by law, I think that it is providing a structure to deal with noise pollution. I do not believe that the current and proposed bylaws have a structure in place to deal with noise pollution. I also believe the noise by law should be able to deal with uh handling when, you know, we need to sometimes, we, we know we're not following the noise by law, and how do we handle that? We need situations where people uh maybe need an exemption. So I'm thinking that, you know, once in in the village and settlement of St. Jacobs, I'm thinking, you know, it's maybe once in the summer, uh, I'm thinking of the old days at the, at the uh Calvary United. They would have a a weekend of of Christian rock bands that would be there. We would get noticed months ahead of time. It would be, um, you know, noise for part of the weekend. It was never super late at night. We knew about it. And that seems reasonable to me. Maybe at St. Jacobs Sparkles, there's one night where there's loud music happening then. That seems like a reasonable noise exemption. That's two times in the village over the entire year. That's, to me, that's reasonable. I get lots of notice of that. I can handle that. I do feel like the purpose of the noise by law is that we're trying to work together and everybody has to be a good neighbor. Right now, we have some businesses that are being inconsiderate and they're not being good neighbors, and we need a noise by law that will have a structure in place to deal with that, so that we can all have balance and harmony and work together. We are residents that have businesses nearby. The businesses live in a residential neighborhood just as much as the residents live in a business neighborhood. It's both. We have mixed, we have increased density, we have to keep that in mind. I think it's really important that the noise by law thinks about health impacts of noise pollution. If you look at the World Health Organization uh report from twenty eighteen, the health impacts are super important. It talks about cardiac uh arrest, it talks about stress, hypertension, mental health problems. It talks about noises being really loud in hearing loss, and it talks about sleep loss. When we have noise exposure, our body chemistry changes. Over the day while we have noise exposure, our body chemistry is changing. When we come to the end of the day, we need quiet to replenish from that time. It cannot be late at night and nor more noise pollution. It was mentioned that there are several things that cannot be considered, so we're not considering considering snow removal noises or trains or planes. That's beyond the scope of the bylaw. But those are still noises that we are exposed to. So I would like us to consider that we have cumulative noise uh pollution all for the day and exposure. I would like us to look at the Ontario guidelines. Um, I know that some of the other delegates are going to talk a little bit more about this. I want us to look at class two and class three, which is semi-urban and it's rural. People come to the townships for settlements because they believe they're moving to a rural area which is quieter at certain times of the day. Seven o'clock in the morning till seven o'clock at night. You can, you can make that earlier if you want to. If you want it to be six o'clock in the morning, I'm fine with noise then. At seven o'clock at night, I'm starting to to uh, you know, wind- windle down. Kids are starting to go to bed. People want quiet during that time. And it's not nine o'clock, and it's certainly not eleven o'clock that I want to have people being noise. Drunk people being noisy on a patio. That patio's been around well before COVID. And the final thing that I think is super important about annoyed by law is that it should align with the mandates of the township and the values of the township. In the report, it did specify that the process and the by law follows um health and safety of the community. There was nothing in the survey or the report that connected in any way to health and safety of people in the community. If we look at what is valued, these are the values that are in the plan. We value those quiet neighborhoods. We value a less hectic pace of life. We are not Waterloo. We are quiet, well-maintained, treeed um communities and streets. That describes where I live in St. Jacob. I want that to be there. I don't want it to be encouraging people to come to Waterloo so they can be drunk and noisy and have concerts. And I think the plan has to be a plan that is equitable and involves everybody in the void. Um, please do not approve this by law. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. Um, any questions? Next, we'll go to um uh Ms. Booth, you can turn your video and microphone off. Next, we have Raymond Skared. Please turn your microphone on and your video and you can begin when you are ready.
Thank you, Chair, Chair, Mayor and Counselors. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. My name is Raymond Skerritt. I am a resident of St. Jacobs and I'd like to take some time tonight to talk to you about some concerns I have with the proposed noise by law. Starting with the survey results, I know there's going to be some other delegates that are going to go into this point about the amplified music proposal where clearly fifty-one percent uh majority of respondents wanted something different than the proposed times, but staff are still going forward with the proposed times and and even stated in the report that most, most residents were in support of the proposed times. I think we can have some modifications to those times based on the feedback from the survey. And the reasonable noise proposal. Staff seem to have made a pretty large jump from the response that says that it's acceptable to hear your neighbors outside to only considering noise that's being disturbing if it's inside a residential building with windows and doors securely shut. Also, on the public consultation and feedback opportunities. Staff indicated that they met with St. Jacobs BIA to better understand the needs of the businesses. Staff did not meet with residents, even though staff is aware that there have been issues, noise issues between residents and a few businesses in St. Jacobs. And I'm sure that there are other stakeholders in the township as well that would like the opportunity to have some direct input with staff on the development of the by law. For the proposed noise exemptions, as Counselor and Mayor has brought up, um. Noise exemption should be for special events. A couple of times a year seems like a special event to me. The allowance in the proposed by law of two events per week and and eight events per month is excessive. So as an example, if we look at the summer that's coming up. It would be possible for a person to get a noise exemption for a Saturday and Sunday every weekend from June first to September thirtieth this summer. Except for a single weekend in July. And that's only for one person. There could be multiple people that get uh noise exemptions that could cover uh all of the weekends and even times during the week. The definition of unreasonable noise in the proposed by law is not very good, in my opinion. The city of Waterloo does outline decimal levels in their noise by law. Uh, and as Michelle was showing in the previous presentation. There are also decimal levels specified in uh Ministry of Environment documents that staff could use as references for creating uh a proper definition of unreasonable noise in the by law. And the change to the point of reception definition in the by law from any point on our premises to a point within a building is unnecessary. This change doesn't recognize that outdoor spaces should be protected from unreasonable noise. And so just to go over a couple of examples of what the proposed by law would allow without a noise exemption. So trying to put kids to bed on a warm weekday evening at eight o'clock, it would be possible for noise to be coming in uh an open window and the by law wouldn't be considering that unreasonable noise because the window is open. Another example is hosting uh an outdoor gathering with family and friends on a summer evening. Because the point of reception is has been changed to a indoors. There could be noise happening outside that could be interrupting your outdoor gathering. And then a couple of examples with noise exemptions, it would be possible with a noise exemption for noise to be generated on a Friday night after eleven o'clock at night. And that could be disturbing to residents trying to get to sleep at that time. It's also possible for a noise exemption on a Sunday evening with noise that is loud enough that it could be disturbing inside. In conclusion. I hope that the concerns that I've brought forward today are enough for you to ask staff to make some adjustments to the proposed by law. I think that it would be good to get more stakeholder input and allow staff to get a wider range of opinions, especially from residents in St. Jacob. I think that the unreasonable noise needs a better definition. I think that noise exemptions are excessive. And finally, the point of reception definition change is unnecessary. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. K. Council members, any questions? Mr. Scared, please turn your video and microphone off. Next, we have Lowell Williamson. Mr. Williamson, please turn your microphone and um video on and you can begin when you are ready.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. My name is Lowell Williamson. I live on Young Street here in St. Jacobs with my wife Megan Despard and my nine-year-old son Gavin Williamson. I contend that the consultation process for uh the noise by law exemption was flawed. Residents were not given the opportunity as businesses were to express their opinions. With the changing dynamic in St. Jacobs and the township as a whole, this is an important partnership which must be maintained. Uh, I emphasize the word partners. Residents want to see the town prosper, but not at the expense of our our well-being. Businesses has had an additional and more meaningful opportunity to communicate their ideas and vision with the township. Why didn't residents have an opportunity to meet with township staff? With regard to the consultation process, I contend that the survey efficacy of was poor. I work at the University of Waterloo and have supported numerous online surveys, including that those with the Canadian Index of Wellbeing who measure this sort of uh noise issues. Traditionally, survey response rate should be a minimum of twenty percent to get an accurate sample size. Based on twenty sixteen census and the sample size of three hundred and sixty-one, the return rate was one point four percent, which I would say is unacceptable and does not truly reflect the people living in the township. Also, ninety-one percent of the survey respondents identified as residents, but there were no checks or balances in place to ensure that they actually were residents. Standard practice would have been to ask for postal codes, and this would also have addressed any geographical location biases as well. So we don't know for sure if survey respondents were all from Elmira or from the township or from St. Jacobs. We don't know where they were. Also with the survey, it could be filled out multiple times by the same individuals. Were IP addresses checked? Was the data cleaned? What is the providence of that data? I contend that it 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 is flawed. We also need to address the accessibility and availability of the survey. Given the demographics of our township, as previously stated by one of the other delegates. Um, it was only once advertised in the Woolwich Observer on February tenth. And it was advertised on social media, but not everyone is a frequent user of of those platforms and may or may not have been able to see that. Also, it was stated that uh paper copies were available at the administrative office, but this was during a pandemic. So how would people be able to access that in the same way this they would before? But also, why were the results ignored in the notes section? I'm going to go through some of that here. However, for this amplified music proposal, the question currently, the noise by law states that amplified music is prohibited at times, and it gives two sets of times. This is a double-barreled question, which is goes against standard survey practices. I may wish to allow uh noise on Sunday to Thursday, but not Friday and Saturday. But the question that was asked lumped them two to both together, so it it's it's impossible to answer the question accurately. Who designed the survey? Who vetted the survey? Was there a soft li- launch in order to iron out any issues? Um, did anybody do any research with regard to the likes, the comprehensive guide of soliciting opinion and online surveys, which is available through the government of Canada? If you look at the amplified music proposal. Fifty-one percent were essentially not support. They thought the time should not go as late. They wanted amplified music to stay prohibited. Yet in the notes section, it said, since most residents, since residents were mostly in support. Well, mostly is is that's not true. It's a, that's a false statement. Fifty-one were not in percent, were not in support. Um, and if you look at the construction noise proposal. Residents were uh agreed with the proposed changes, fifty-four percent, yet no changes were completed. Makes you question the validity of the questions and the survey as a whole. I also would suggest that we need to look back further than three years. In twenty twenty-one, there was an increase in noise complaints. Of the last three years, twenty twenty-one accounted for forty-four percent of the noise complaints in that three-year time. Currently, there is an upwards trend as a result. But historically, what do previous years show and what is the overall trend? The important issue here is the changing dynamic in St. Jacobs and going back three years does not seem to be an adequate sample size. And it does not give you context pre-pandemic. And it does not give you context pre-pandemic. And if we're interested in measuring things, then what me is measured is counted. So noises are considered to be at an acceptable level if they're between forty and sixty decibels. A background noise, and this is directly from the provincial government. Noise pollution is recognized by the Ontario government. Uh sound volume in decibels being referenced is about the same as the volume of your refrigerator. What is measured is counted. Without the measurables, then uh bylaw officers have an extreme amount of leeway as to what they can and cannot do. Choose not to do as a result. It would be similar to a police officer pulling you over and saying you're speeding. And then not giving you the actual speed that you were going. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your presentation. Council members, any questions? Seeing none, Mr. Williamson, you can turn your microphone and video video off. And next we have um. Stephen Bates. You can now turn your microphone and video on and you can be. You begin when you are ready.
Thank you, Chair and Counselor. Uh my name is Stephen Bates. I live at twenty uh Spring Street in St. Jacobs. The concerns that I have are threefold. First of all, if I start at the top end of the funnel. The concern that I have is we've got a horse and a cart problem. One of the things that has happened here is that we're tinkering with how to make the bylaw different. But we do not have a definition of who we want to become. We don't have a definition of where we're headed. And until we decide as a community, what kind of a neighborhood we want to have, what kind of community we want to have. It's very difficult to figure out what's the appropriate noise by law to put in place. So I would certainly encourage us to spend time talking that issue through. Who do we want to become? And then figure out a way to align the noise bylaws to support that. Now, in a conversation last week with Vanessa, one of the things she said is, but this is covering all of the municipality. Well, it seems to me that you have set a precedent uh for taking segments of the. Municipality and looking after their interests very directly. For example, there's planning in downtown Elmira. And you're thinking about doing something there that you're not thinking of doing in all the other uh smaller towns and villages that are part of this municipality. You just may need to have something different for various municipalities. Or various towns and hamlets within this larger municipality. So it's a horse and a cart and a carton. Problem. We haven't right. We're tinkering with a bylaw when we should be thinking about who do we want to become as a village. Now, that issue should have been addressed a long time ago. Uh but it hasn't been done by this council or by former councils. Um councils advocated to Mercedes and Mercedes ran the village for several decades. Um and uh it seems to me that if we don't plan and think and decide who it is that we want to become, we'll grow like top seed. Second point that I have is that. Um I will put under the heading of uh we don't. Uh know if we need more tools. In my conversation last week with Vanessa, one of the things that she indicated to me is that this bylaw is going to give bylaw officers more tools. Uh I asked the question about, well, how often, for example, in a two-year period have fines been used or. Other disciplinary measures to deal with those who have violated noise uh levels. I told I I was told I couldn't get some information, but the piece of information that I did get. Was that uh there have been zero fines in a two-year period. Now, if noise has existed in this village for two years, you think there would be resolution. Where you think that there would have been fines issued. So going into the bylaw and saying what we're going to do is we're going to increase fines because that's going to do something for us seems to be. Well, just a little fake or shall I say shallow. I I don't think we need to give more tools as much as we may need to really encourage people to apply what is there. Although further dialogue may suggest that we should get more sophisticated in the technology we use to really assess what the noise level is. Who knows? But of course, you would only want to do that, it seems to me, once you've decided what kind of village you want to become. The third thing is, is that when I was in grad school fifty years ago. Uh I had professors who are rather passionate about thinking through sampling techniques. And let me tell you, none of what we've seen is would pass mustard fifty years ago. As uh members of council, I would be quite honestly ashamed of the work that you have your staff members doing here. Uh Lowell adequately and appropriately mapped out the problems that are associated with it. I couldn't agree more. So three good reasons uh why you don't want to proceed. One is we haven't figured out who we want to be. We haven't had a dialogue about that. We haven't gone elbow to elbow with one another, asking questions. And we've got the potential of just lapsing into becoming some kind of party town because there are people in town right now that want to. Uh have venues where people can come and enjoy themselves. Number two, we don't know if we need more tools. The tools that are there haven't been applied. Probably what we need are more devices so that we really measure with some accuracy. What the noise levels are. And number three. Uh the sampling is so poor, I can't see developing any kind of direction, even if we can pass those other issues that I mentioned, I can't see that we want to proceed. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Bates. Counsel, are there any questions? Thank you again, Mr. Bates. You can turn your video and microphone off. Next, we have Craig Miller and Nick Benninger representing this in Jacob's BIA. Please turn your microphone and video on and begin when you are ready.
Uh yes, good evening. I don't believe uh Nick Benninger is on the call. He had to be excused, so uh I'm here to talk on behalf of the St. Jacobs Business Improvement Association. Uh as mentioned, my name is Craig Miller and I am the Vice Chair of the St. Jacobs BIA. Um just wanted to take a moment to uh say hi to Honorable Mayor Shance and fellow council members of Woolwich Township. And staff. Um as you can imagine, the last couple of years has uh been very tough with the COVID pandemic on the village of St. Jacobs and in particularly. The St. Jacobs Business Improvement Association. So we do appreciate the support that Township has uh been there to provide us with during the pandemic. Um just for those that that aren't too familiar with it, um I have been in the village for about fifteen years uh as a store owner. And I have seen the village um go from a privately funded enterprise, which is Mercedes Corporation. Um to the current vehicle, which is the St. Jacobs BIA. So our board is made up of a group of volunteers. Um and I've been on that board for the the previous four years. And back in the day, Mercedes had a business model um. That attracted us to the village, which was um lots of tour buses. Um there would be, you know, tens of upon hundreds of tour buses throughout the summer that would. Park in the back lot at the Corey Building and people would, you know, come through town and and that presented a lot of challenges on its own. Uh over the years, you know, with the pandemic and whatnot, we've seen a big decrease in tourism from abroad. So we're not getting a lot of tourists and whatnot. Um so the village and businesses have had to kind of restructure their businesses in order to stay afloat. Um most of the back in the day when Mercedes had the village and when they're running it, um our store hours were Monday to Saturday, ten to five. And then on Sundays from noon until five o'clock, and then the village basically uh went dormant and quiet. I think it's key to mention that that model that was previous is no longer feasible or sustainable. And businesses are trying to, you know, do things and I'm hoping in a tasteful manner um that can help hopefully um, you know, show the ambience of the town. And by no means is amplified music. Are we trying to say that we're going to have rock concerts and and that sort of thing? You know, it's more to to play some uh light music over having dinner and conversation with the fellow family and friends. And again, to help enhance the experience and enjoyment of the village. And I really hope that that the residents understand that our BIA, we are trying to. You know, come to common ground with them and we understand that they live in the village and likewise, we work and have our business in the village. And and we're all there for the common reason that we do genuinely enjoy the village of St. Jacobs and and for what it is. Um. One thing I will mention too is uh we've actually been burning upon ourselves as a BIA to try to bridge the gap with the residents uh in the St. Jacobs community. Uh so we did have a meeting on Tuesday, March twenty-nine, um where we had a community engagement meeting. And um and then afterwards, we had a BIA social for the membership. So uh again, we're trying to do things to understand people's. You know, concerns and how we can try to, you know, come to common ground and to. Um, you know, make the village a better spot for everybody and and hopefully when family and friends come to visit. You're excited to, you know, bring them down and and show them the businesses and stuff like that that are around the corner. Um, you know, and that you've come to enjoy. Uh one thing I would say too is that, you know, the businesses in St. Jacobs uh offer a lot of um employment opportunities. For, you know, your grandkids, uh children, brothers, sisters, aunts, uncles. Um, you know, and and like you said, we uh we we definitely, you know, try to be a positive impact on the economy as a whole in the Woods Township. Uh one thing too to mention is, you know, being able to stay open a little bit later, and I'm looking at some of the hospitality sides of things. It also allows some of the shop owners that if there's things going on in the village that they're going to stay open uh later as well. And hopefully we we can become more of a destination, uh not just during the daytime, but a little bit into the evening as well. Um uh again, it's it's been a a tough goal for a lot of our our members. Uh one thing is too is if some of the businesses are open a little bit later, we find that um, you know, it it can reduce uh mischief, nuisances. Um and any kind of thefts and stuff like that as well, because a lot of that is a deterrent when they know that there is people around. Uh some of that stuff is reduced as well. Um and I encourage, you know, any of the delegates that we're on tonight, by all means, um, you know, we welcome you at open arms to come to a meeting. You know, we have our board meetings on the first Tuesday of every month. We meet at eight thirty in the morning. Um anybody's, you know, able to attend the meetings and listen in to what we're talking about, the minutes get posted on the uh Woolwich Township website. And as always, uh, you know, we're hoping that we can continue that that same meeting that we had on on March twenty-ninth. That we do it quarterly and and so that we can get that community engagement and support as a whole. So that's all I have. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Committee members, if any questions? Um, Counsel Shance.
Yes, thank you through you to Mr. Miller. Um I do have a couple of questions. You said you had a uh community engagement on March to twenty-ninth. What kind of turnout did you get from the community on that night?
Uh we had, I'm going to say maybe three or four members of the St. Jacobs community. The hardest thing has been identifying. Um a lot of the residents that that would probably like to come out and be part of that. Um so I know that we have tried to identify some of those individuals. That can, you know, whether they're the heads of different committees. I know there's a few different community groups within the village. Um and and like you said, to mention, you know, we are an open door and we're we're definitely, you know, welcome for people to. To come out and and talk to their concerns and stuff like that, so.
And if I could do a follow-up uh. And chair, um. Do you feel that the residents are being unreasonable uh wanting to have the noise uh uh less in the evenings? Uh they're not asking to have the uh businesses shut down early. They're just asking to have the noise level taken down to a reasonable level. Is that being unreasonable?
Yeah, no, and and I I totally agree. I mean, I I understand from a residential point of view, I I totally get where they're coming from. And I think that that's where, you know, we need to be good neighbors on both sides of the fence. Um and I I do think that the businesses understand that, you know, if they are playing light music, I think the intention is that you could have a conversation. And that's just a little bit of a a background noise from my understanding. And and like you said, we we want to work with the neighbors. And um and we understand, like I mentioned before, we both live and work and play. You know, in that setting, and we want to make it enjoyable for everybody as best we can. And I think they need to realize too that. You know, we're 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 trying as business owners to run businesses and we want to be a positive impact on the community and, you know, be those people to sponsor your kids' baseball teams, soccer teams and and give back. It's a it's a win-win for everybody, so.
Yeah, thank you. I agree with that. Uh just just a comment that was out recently uh for an evening meal and the music was so loud that I could hardly talk. And that's that's not enjoyable even when you're at the meal, so uh just sort of add it as a comment.
Here, Shance.
Larry pretty well covered my question, so thanks.
I'm from Rohan.
Yeah, thank you. Um through you, Chair Martin, to Mr. Miller. Now, you talked about finding common ground uh with the residents. Um, you know, I think probably all of us here in council have spoken to quite a few residents uh uh in the past week. Um I heard uh from one that, you know, residents would go down to the businesses and it appears that there's. Three or four businesses that are um are the one causing the problem for the entire uh BIA. Um and uh they're asking them to turn the music down and and they're not getting anywhere. And they were really reluctant uh to go the by the bylaw route. Um and the business owners seemed to ignore their uh their request for um, you know, reducing the sound that was clearly. Uh impacting them and their enjoyment of their property. Uh I guess as a BIA, is that something that, you know, you've talked about as. As a BIA that um, you know, how do how do we address these concerns with residents? And do we. We do we just schluff them off and and uh, you know, it it grow when you do that, I guess it grows to to this point. We're here, we're talking about it at a council meeting. So I guess I I'd like to hear more about the common ground approach uh that the BIA is talking about.
Yeah, and and knowing and to speak to your comment, uh I I'm not aware of exactly what businesses. Were not shutting their music down or listening to the concerns that some of the citizens had that I am not aware of exactly. Uh but I would say to not, yeah, we're not there to, in my opinion, shove people off to the side. Um and in terms of this has been the biggest struggle, um usually, you know, predominantly a business improvement association is is there to be an advocate for the businesses in the community. Um we understand that it's a different dynamic in St. Jacobs and, you know, it's um, yeah, it's a very heartfelt town. And uh, you know, I walk down the street and I see lots of people that are residents that I bump into all the time and we have good conversations and stuff like that. And I think that's the the kind of relationship that we're all striving for. And and again, how we get that common ground, I mean, that's a good question and that's where we're really. You know, we're open for suggestions for sure. Um but that's what we've been trying to do is, you know, have people out, like you said, we started, you got to start somewhere and build a foundation. And that's where with that meeting on the twenty-ninth, we we got at least a couple, two or three community members out. That we were able to talk and and just brainstorm and and try to find a, you know, come to different uh common areas that we can work on to improve the relationship with the residents.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Um, Council Reddick.
Yeah, I think it's high. I think the issue is highlighted by uh Mr. Miller and Mr. Bates about what kind of community we want to be. And I think uh uh it's it's been a struggle in the last, especially around COVID, about how to determine what kind of community we want to be. We did have another meeting uh when the um issue around the timber barn, which is on Spring Street. So it was a virtual meeting and we had about thirty people on it. So I think that was another way in which the BIA and the Township staff came together. To try to hear the concerns, similar concerns, although the timber barn isn't open yet, was like, how much noise can we expect from the timber barn? So I thought that was a good. Uh reaching out by both the BIA and the Township staff to try to get a better sense of the issues around uh noise. And I think this is also highlighted that this is this that noise by by. And I think this is also highlighted, that this is, that noise by- bylaws for the township. But it's really a Saint Jacobs issue at this point. Uh, because this is where most of the complaints are and this is where, as uh. Counselor Merlehan said, we've heard from a lot of residents and mostly from the Saint Jacobs area. So, thank you very much, Mr. Miller.
Any further questions? Thank you, Mr. Miller. Please turn your video and microphone off. I will now ask the clerk if there are any unregistered delegations in the meeting for this report.
Uh, through you, Miss, through you, Mr. Chair, there are no unregistered delegations tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Thank you again to all our delegates for your comments this evening. Is there are no other further delegations, council will now discuss and debate. Council, is there any further discussion or questions for staff? Mayor Shance.
Thank you, um. I guess I have a question. Um, the thing that is um standing out for me is um definition of. Of noise and and what's acceptable and what's not acceptable. So I wonder if staff can just talk a little bit about, and and I know you've answered this question. Already about, oh, using uh decibels or some kind of more objective rather than subjective. Valuation of of what. Is acceptable and unacceptable.
I can probably start uh with that question, um, and then maybe turn it over to Officer Albanese if uh, if there's additional information she has. Um, the, I I guess again to start, um, the bylaw is a um. Continuation, I guess, of of what we have in place right now. We weren't looking at, uh, you know, completely changing our processes and moving to a decibel uh type system. Um, as uh, as Vanessa said before, that would be a a pretty big change for us. It would require more training, more commitment. Um, we're not talking about using um. You know, cell phone apps or anything like that to measure noise and hoping that will, will stand up in court if if we issue tickets or anything like that. So, you know, to to make that change would be a a bit of a, bit of a significant change. The other thing we can do with our, um, you know, unreasonable noise, you know, when we look at that, um, how officers will enforce that. The level can be determined, um, sort of at the officer's discretion, which can be a really good thing for communities. Where, you know, when we're getting more and more complaints in an area, the officer's level of discretion or or the the level of noise that accounts. Can be determined unreasonable can can kind of go down a little bit. And that can really help us tailor our enforcement to the level of the community. It's, it's similar in in a sense to the way we do, uh, a lot of our enforcement is by complaint basis. So, um, you know, i- in a community that's maybe by a golf course, you might see. Uh, very, very targeted uh property standards complaints versus, you know, a a community where where people are kind of struggling to do that. If the whole community agrees with that, um, or or there aren't any complaints at least, then we can be a little bit more flexible. Um, Vanessa, was there anything I missed, uh, or anything you wanted to add?
No, I think that was mostly everything. Um, just like the point of reception changing just makes it more clear. Um, before it was clearly audible, um, so you stand on the corner, the edge of someone's property and you can, you can kind of hear it. Um, but is that an offense, right? So, being more, being more direct. Allows us to be like, okay, we sit in our car on the street outside the business with the windows up. Okay, we can hear it, it's too loud. It's setting, it's setting um better parameters um to what, what we are enforcing.
Okay, if I, if I could just um. Have one more comment, I think. I'm, I'm inclined to ask for for a deferral, but I'm not gonna do it right now because I know some other counselors. Want to speak. Um, there's two issues here. One is the, one is the bylaw itself and the other is. The communication and working in the Saint Jacobs community to um. Come to, to an understanding of what is acceptable and and what isn't uh for the community as a whole, businesses and residents. Um, but they are tied together and so um. Uh, again, I'll, I'll wait till uh the other counselors have had a chance to, to speak, but I'm. Kind of inclined to to put a deferral on the bylaw until we've had a chance to, to um. Have some kind of opportunity for the residents and the businesses to uh have a little more discussion.
Shance.
Uh, thank you. I just have a comment and then a a question. Um, I guess my first comment is I. Don't think that we need to have eight special events a month. I think that's too excessive. I think that a special event is a special event, not a, not a regular occurring event. So I think we have to look at that, that would be my comment. The question I have is, uh, Mr. Bowman, I alluded to the fact that you've. Had a number of complaints, but we've never laid a a charge. Is that correct?
It was, so uh, there was a huge shift in the last two years with outdoor patios. Our first step is always to. To try to work with, with business owners, even residents, um, with noise complaints. Um, it starts with, okay, face your speakers downwards. Um, we're gonna stand here, see if we can hear it. We've just been working with. The businesses, um, going forward. And if they did have the noise exemptions, if they apply for them. And it's just finding that ground of what's reasonable and the current bylaw doesn't, doesn't set out what's reasonable.
But if we have reoccurring issues, would we not start uh laying some charges?
We're, we're trying to work with the businesses to to, to let them know what reasonable is. Like if they have their music on, they might not realize that it's, it's too loud uh down the street. So we, yeah, I'll, I'll pass this to Jeff.
Uh, sorry Vanessa, you do, you're uh doing very well, but I just wanted to add to that. Um, you know, when, when we do get to, um, you know, businesses that aren't complying, or or I should say, anyone. Businesses, residents, et cetera, that aren't complying, uh, yes, we would issue uh fines to those businesses. What we were finding is, um, I I think more of a breakdown in terms of the way we were doing enforcement in in, especially in the last year. So, we were issuing our noise exemptions and waiting for complaints to come in the following. Following, you know, day or or whatever, because most of them were at night or or on the weekends. And then, uh, you know, uh, using a complaint-based uh system of enforcement. The officers weren't there, they weren't able to hear the noise for themselves. Uh, they get, the complaints kind of come in the next day or the next week if it's on a weekend. Um, we were actually having, you know, and 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 I think what, I think what the issue was, was that residents. Saw a long time for officers to respond. Um, but when the officers were responding, what, once they kind of got to, okay, there's, there's some complaints here. We, we either need to stop issuing exemptions or we need to work with these businesses a little bit more. Once we could make contact with those businesses, we found a lot of them were actually uh very good at, um. At, uh, you know, working with us to comply. Um, as Vanessa said, we work with several businesses to change the direction of their speakers, to change times. Um, to change, you know, uh, the, the way their music was played, um, even, even kind of the layouts of their uh, their, their areas. Um, so that we could mitigate those complaints as best we could. I think, um, I think the, the breakdown for us or the, the area for, for improvement is to be more responsive. And that's why we're looking at increasing the enforcement so that we have an officer there. If it's a, you know, a Saturday night. There's an officer scheduled to work Saturday night to listen to that noise. They can be much more proactive in terms of telling people to, to keep their music down. And where a business doesn't comply, then the officer can issue a ticket on the spot if needed.
So are you suggesting that we're gonna have officers there every Saturday and Sunday night, Friday night as well?
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair, yes, uh, we are planning on having officers. Uh, we have a part-time officer right now, um. Who's, uh, we, we started talking about staying on, um. Into the, uh, you know, uh, an officer that does evening um parking enforcement. That we're talking about staying on uh through the summer months to support uh noise exemptions, in part because of this extra work. Um, you know, that's, I guess I should say that's what we're trying to do this summer with, um. Within the, the conf- confines of our budget. We may need to ask council for additional resources, uh, you know, going forward as this. It, you know, i- if we continue to have, have uh concerns from the residents and and the businesses, um, particularly in Saint Jacobs, but. But in all areas. I I mean, if, I I know we're talking, a a lot of the conversation tonight has focused on, on Saint Jacobs. But in the past, we've had concerns where people say, you know, I I live in Almyra and, um, you know, my neighbors had a party last night. And they're calling bylaw enforcement at, uh, you know, Saturday night at, at midnight, let's say. And bylaw enforcement isn't responding. So. We would typically follow up again the next week when we get the complaints, uh, you know, either the email or the voicemail comes into us. But one of the things we're trying to do, like I've mentioned before, is to have that more proactive um enforcement, so we can be there. Um, a- at, at least at the beginning. Anytime we're issuing an exemption, the plan is to have an officer there. Uh, while the officer's there, they can be out looking for other uh, other things as well. Um, like maybe a party in, um, in Almyra or or something else to that effect. Um, so like I say, this, this is a, an improvement to our service. As we continue on, um, if we, we may need to ask for more resources because I don't think we can staff every weekend. Um, especially if we don't have a noise exemption plan.
Thank you.
Councilor Merlehan.
Yeah, thank you, um, through you, uh, Chair Martin. Um, I just have general comments at this point. Uh, as far as uh some of the things that I'd like to see, I would, I. I'd probably uh support uh Mayor Shance's uh motion for a deferral uh on this uh to uh a future meeting. Um, I would like to see uh the cost, the fees for the exemptions to uh at least cover the cost. Of the exemption. Um, and I see that as a, as also as a, as a benefit of, uh. You know, people thinking twice about whether it's a special exemption or not, or just a regular Friday, Saturday night where you. Have people playing music uh all, all night. I'd like to see the fines increase, uh, cause they have to be more than what the uh, the fee is. Um, fewer exemptions uh throughout the year. Um, and I worry about just the cum- cumulative effect of, you know, multiple businesses all, you know, having. Two uh exemptions and you could have a number of different things happening uh in one area. Um, and I would probably support a future uh plan to take a look at. Um, Saint Jacobs, I think it was, um, Mr. Bates that was talking about uh planning. And having more public engagement to talk about uh what kind of community, um, Saint Jacobs wants to become. Because it's clearly a community in a, in a different transition that, uh, I think has uh maybe gone unnoticed. Um, by, uh, you know, previous councils and this council. The delegates, uh, all the delegates, uh, were uh really good tonight, all made good points. Um, Michelle Booth, um, I think, uh, one of her points, uh, was just be a good neighbor. Um, you know, that applies to so many different council uh issues across the board, uh, being a good neighbor. Um, in this instance, uh, we're talking about neighbors between businesses and um, and residents in the area. Uh, when I started my business, uh, I had, had the benefit of a number of mentors that, uh, really shaped. Uh, who I have become as a, as a business person. Uh, one of my mentors that I got to know really well was Milo Shance. Um, he, uh, he was adamant about uh maintaining that trust with the community. And uh, we had lots of conversations about how, how and why. Uh, he chose that the business would shut down uh at five o'clock. He, he, he felt strongly that. Uh, he knew he was taking something away from residents by allowing buses and tourism and all that kind of stuff to. Uh, take over parking spots, you know, people walking on their lawns, all that kind of stuff. He knew that there was a. Uh, a cost to the residents and he wanted the town to be returned to the residents at five o'clock. Which is why he didn't go after businesses, um, that, uh, wanted to have evening uh type. Uh, businesses and things like that. You know, I understand that, that had to change uh over time, especially with the US dollar. And just market impacts uh of tourism and, you know, it is a different beast. But boy, when Saint Jacobs was at its peak, it was, uh, it was a busy town. And I, I worked uh downtown Saint Jacobs and all, it paid for my way through university. Um, and uh, you know, it, it, it's, it is a different beast. Um, but it's incumbent upon the businesses there, um, to be good neighbors. And uh, that, that means that when they come and complain and uh about noise that you're keeping them up. I mean, clearly it wasn't just a couple of times, this has been going on for a couple of years. And I understand the frustration that, uh, that, that residents, uh, have, which is. Why I would support Mayor Shance's deferral, just so that we can take another look, just to to get this a little bit more right. I, you know, I had a great conversation with Vanessa this afternoon and I understand where, where, uh, where all this coming from. And and that, right now, it's sensitive in Saint Jacobs because of the issues there over the past two years. Um, I think there are a lot of good um benefits to the, to the bylaw. I, I think we just need a little bit more time to reflect and look at maybe those fees and the exemptions. And, you know, if there's one takeaway from anything I'm saying now, it's to the businesses to be good neighbors. It is so important. We shouldn't be talking at council meetings about, uh, the noise emanating. Uh, from your businesses, uh, you know, that's something that, uh, you mitigate on your own. When we look at planning issues, uh, when. People wanna put up an apartment or anything, you know, there's, uh, there's noise studies, there's traffic studies. You can't have light that goes on other people's properties. There's, there's tons of, uh, of stipulations on, on business, on different types of businesses and it includes noise. And uh, I, anyway, I'll, I'll leave it at that, um, uh, for now. Thanks.
Councilor McMillan.
Thanks, Chair Shance. Through you, I, I think we need to be careful when we're pointing fingers at businesses saying that they're acting inappropriately. I think. Some of this comes on to, you know, uh, just a rub on planning. And we deal with complaints. And and Council Merlehan, you've been really articulate in the concern about, um, you know, residents complaints, the complaints that we've had. With, uh, uh, the businesses here in Almyra. And and sometimes it's not necessarily that businesses aren't good neighbors. Sometimes there's just some conflict with what is good for one aspect of the community and. And that not necessarily being the best thing for another aspect of the community. And and so much of what we do is trying to find a balance. Um, so I, I, I think we should take caution with. Finger pointing at businesses and and telling them what to do. Um, I, I wonder. How long would it take us to, sorry, do you wanna respond to that right away, Council Merlehan, before I go further? Um, how long would it take to? To modify or change the bylaw? I- if if we did go with the, the change as proposed. And we found that it wasn't working, we're gonna have, you know, a staff member out there every time there's an exemption applied for. If, if the bylaw officer came back and the feedback was, listen. We're trying to work with the businesses, it's not working. There's a, there is, um, you know. Uh, an insurmountable barrier here to get something that is okay for everyone. Could we change this back in June or July, or is this something that would have to go for? A year or two before we said, hey, this isn't working?
Councilor Merlehan, yes, no?
Sorry, I thought somebody was going to answer Council McMillan's question.
I thought you were gonna, cause you wanted in, you wanted a.
Uh, there was a two-pronged thing.
There's two parts, Chair Martin. I, I ha- I made a comment. Kind of in response to Council Merlehan, I'm sure Council Merlehan would like to speak about that. And then I, after that, I had a question that I thought staff could answer.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Okay, we do have a recommendation.
Well, sorry, Chair Martin, I, I did have a question for staff and then I think Council Merlehan did wanna respond to my comments.
I've been waiting, I've been asking.
But I think you have to call on the people.
I did?
Okay.
Councilor Merlehan. Council Merlin.
I I won't be able to answer the question that Council McMillan asked, so I think you want to ask Clerk Smith.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Uh yes, through you, Chair Martin. So in terms of updating this uh this bylaw, sorry. Um it it's in a lot better format and um. And a lot easier for us to to amend going forward. Um so you know, sh- short answer would be, um you know, if council asks us to amend it, we could probably do an amendment in a month or two. Um what, once we have all approvals from the province and it's in place, uh we could see how it goes. And then, yeah, it could be a pretty short time. Um I I guess the only uh the only thing I would say is we we would want to give uh notice to the public. In terms of if uh if certain things were changing, so if we were, say, changing the hours, um where you could have amplified music, you'd probably want to give the public some notice. Before you 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 kind of quickly change that, uh but that would be up to council. There's nothing kind of holding us back.
I could just add in, um and the way that it's set up, you would just have to repeal the schedule and replace it. Um and none of the set fines would would be affected. We wouldn't have to go out for new set fines if we're just changing things within the schedule.
Council McMillan.
Thank you, Chair Martin. Through you, I I think the the other comment I had is, it's been asked, what kind of community do we want to be? And I think. Um I've worked hard with the Almyra BIA and and one of our, one of my goals there is is that Almyra doesn't. Become just a bedroom community. And and I think um we need to give. Businesses in in our settlements that draw people to those businesses. Uh chances to survive so that people don't have to go to Kitchener Waterloo to do everything. And um you know, there's there's a clear desire to have these. Types of establishments in our settlements. I think when you see a place like Row Roots open up and the crowds that they get there. There is a hunger to have these things in our settlements. And and I certainly understand the residents' concerns, and I do not think they're being unreasonable. Uh but I would like to give this a chance, uh give these businesses a chance, because I do want. The people who live in Saint Jacobs to be able to walk to an establishment in Saint Jacobs and not have to go into Waterloo or Kitchener. To have the same type of experience. Um so I'd like to give this a shot. I I think that having that officer there on site every time an exemption is um is granted. Uh gives me um some some faith that that this can, that this can work. Um I think that, you know, I I think that the the concerns that have been raised by by Mayor Shance, Council Merlin. Counselor Shance is eight too many, could be um i- is the, are the fees enough? They might not be. Um but I think that if we if we put it in place, we can see if it works or not, we can see how it needs to be changed. Rather than trying to find the perfect solution before we implement it. So I'd like to see this go forward the way it's written and and give it a shot and see how it goes.
Any further, Council McMillan, um Alan Merlin.
Uh yeah, thank you through you, uh Chair Martin. Uh I do want to respond to Council McMillan's comments. Um I don't. Really understand um what his comments were about me singling out business. Um I use the word business. I didn't. Single out a any business, I I said business. Um I am very supportive of business. Um and he mentioned something about Almyra and I I don't even know what he was talking about. Um but when we talk about the noise bylaw in the in the um perspective of all of Woolwich Township, you know, I look at Almyra. And you know, to have what Saint Jacobs has in Almyra would would be fantastic. Um you know, they have. Uh a lot of thriving businesses that that are doing well. Um and uh and and you know, Almyra would would love to have establishments that. You could go and hear live music and and have that. Um but also Almyra wants, and when we look at these planning, is having more density in our in our downtown areas. Um we, you know, we'd like to bring more seniors homes uh above uh. Commercial spaces in the downtown to bring more vibrancy to the town. So when we're looking at these bylaws and this noise bylaw, I think about. You know, what are we putting in place uh to for for the future, these people that are going to be living downtown if if uh. Establishments come in um and perform live music every second weekend, uh you know, it is something that. Will uh certainly turn people off and uh and and I. Yeah, so you have to look at it that way. I also bring the experience of being a bad business. And not being compatible with uh your neighbors. When I first started our business, we were in the. Basement of a of an apartment building. Um it was, you know, licensed to be a business. Uh clearly not compatible. The walls were so thin that no matter how quiet we tried to be, uh we did disturb our neighbors, so. We moved, we had to move because it it just wasn't right. So I know what it's like to be a business. Um and and not be compatible with your neighbors, and it's really not a good thing. I'm telling it, I'm telling. Business in general um that, you know, you should get along with your neighbors as best you can because it sucks when you don't. And uh and when I say that we shouldn't be talking about, you know, these particular things. Uh you you know, businesses don't want to be the subject of of a council meeting, uh talking about. Uh you know, the neighbors not liking them or not liking their sound or the the not being able to enjoy their property. So that's the perspective I bring. Anything that you suggested in your comments about what I said, I don't even understand. Um so we'll just leave it at that.
Mayor Shance.
Thank you. Um so I'm gonna see if this goes anywhere. I'd move that we defer um. Approval of the noise bylaw until uh till we've had a chance to. Provide or help brokers some kind of a a meeting in Saint Jacobs for the community as a whole. Um but no later than uh the end of June. If I can get a second or for that and see where.
Second for that motion? Um Council Shance, any further discussion? Um Council Redacott.
Yeah, I I think I would I would vote in favor of deferral. Uh I think the residents would would appreciate, the residents of Saint Jacobs would appreciate more input. I would disagree with, I think it was uh Lowell, that I think we had enough respondents. Because most of them came from Saint Jacobs, I think. Uh so, but I still feel that the community wants some more public engagement, and so I would be in favor of that. Uh uh yeah, and also the another comment about. The changing nature of Saint Jacobs. So Mercedes Corporation, for a lack of a better word, ran the place. And the BIA is relatively new. I sit on it as a member of council, but it's relatively new, so they're still trying to figure out what role a BIA plays. You know, they don't want tourist buses, but they want a certain uh. A certain way to do business, and so I think we have to support them as well, so, but I would be in favor of deferring for more public engagement.
No, I think we've had enough discussion on this. It's past ten o'clock. I see people nodding their heads, but goodness, we keep it short if you're gonna speak. Council McMillan.
Thank you, Chair. I appreciate the opportunity to to speak. It's the first discussion we've had since the motion to defer, so I appreciate the opportunity to. Give my rationale for my vote. Um I think a deferral is fine. I think the rationale for the deferral is is good. I think that. The the residents bring reasonable uh concerns to the table. Uh my concern is I I'd rather see it go forward. I don't think we need to get it perfect before we make it better. Um so I'm gonna vote against the deferral, but I don't think it's it's a bad move. I don't think it's a bad thing we're doing.
Council Shance.
Thank you. Uh I would like to add one thing to the deferral. I would like to see us send out uh written letters to all of the. Uh residents in the in Saint Jacobs, so that everybody gets an opportunity to uh go to that meeting.
Are we ready for the question? Any further discussion? Mayor Shance must have left some of her magic on his desk because I wrote down, we'll either pass it, we'll deny it, or defer it back to staff. So I think I know where we're going. I'll ask the question, all those in favor of deferring it back to staff until, what is the date? June? Late June. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Okay, next. Climate change. Woolwich Township built it right the first time. We have a notice of motion on the agenda this evening as requested by Council Merlin. Since it is a motion, a notice of motion, all debate regarding the motion will happen at. The April twenty fifth council meeting. Council Merlin, would you like to introduce the motion before we hear from the registered delegation?
Uh sure, thank you. I'll keep it real brief uh and let the delegate uh speak for himself on this motion. Um but uh he uh this was brought forward uh to align with uh City of Waterloo and Whitby both. Um passed a a similar uh request to the province to update uh the Ontario Building Code. Um to uh align with uh future upgrades to uh home efficiencies and things like that. Uh that if if you if they update the building code, the the homes that are being built right now could be built to spec and save money in the. In the future and not have to replace uh certain elements uh long before their their use. So. Uh I know we've talked about certain, these kinds of things before in various different planning reports and. Um subdivision reports and how we wanted improved um. Uh greening initiatives, I I suppose, in the in the planning. Uh so I thought this was something that would be up uh council's alley, um but uh. Uh as of today, there um according to AMO and uh the Climate Caucus. Uh the province is actually considering uh making some of these uh initiatives that that are in this motion. Uh and and considering it. So it would be, we would be uh the third municipality at this point uh that would be making this request. Um but I'll let Kevin uh Thompson uh speak and have his delegation.
Okay, next we will hear from our registered delegation, Kevin Thompson from Grand River Environmental Network. Mister Thompson, you can turn your video on and your microphone on and begin when you are ready.
Excellent. Good evening and and thank you for the uh for the the introduction. Honorable mayor, councillors and guests, my name is Kevin Thompson and I'm a longtime community and environmental advocate. I have the unique situation of living on Cedar Grove Road in northeast Wilmont Township, rate where Woolwich, the city of Waterloo, Wilmont and Wellesley all meet. This provides a unique perspective on four of the fastest growing municipalities in Canada. As much as we are growing, as you are well aware, we're also in a climate crisis that is getting increasingly more concerning every day. We all know that rapid change is required and that we aren't moving fast enough. Increasingly concerned Canadians are demanding that our governments do more, while our youth are already extremely concerned about the future they'll be facing. The good news is that we already have many of the solutions that we require. We know what needs to be done, but it isn't happening fast enough. We also know that despite all the global treaties and national programs, that many of the most impactful climate actions we can undertake are here at the local level. We can design our communities to be more sustainable, complete and compact. We can better facilitate public transit and active modes of transportation. We can undertake actions to protect farmland, water, aquifers and natural areas. We can build and retrofit far more efficient buildings and that utilize better energy sources. Many of these much-needed actions fall into the broad heading of green development standards. And here in Waterloo region, there is a new citizen group called Green WR being created to see how we can encourage and accelerate the adoption. Of green development standards by the region of Waterloo and our area municipalities. This motion before you tonight, the Woolwich Township Build It Right The First Time motion, is one of these first initiatives. This motion recognizes that forty percent, uh forty-five percent actually, of our emissions come from buildings. That Woolwich has adopted greenhouse gas reduction targets of fifty percent by twenty thirty and eighty percent by twenty fifty, in line with the Paris Accord. That our buildings are too often built only to the minimum of the Ontario Building Code, which can be quite insufficient. That both the provincial and federal government timelines to reach higher energy performance standards, such as net zero, are simply too far into the future. And that we can't be waiting to twenty thirty for better standards, when tens of thousands of buildings to be built in the coming years could already be achieving higher standards. Enjoying lower operating costs and improve climate resilience. And that it is far more cost-effective to build it right the first time, particularly when we know what needs to be done. Thus, this motion calls on the provincial government to expedite the adoption of more ambitious energy performance standards. And allow municipalities to require higher standards than just the provincial minimums. This motion calling on the province to adopt higher standards is an important first step. And a version of this motion, as you'd heard earlier, was unanimously approved by the city of Waterloo two weeks ago, with a copy of it sent to every municipality in Ontario. We urge Woolwich Council to similarly approve this motion tonight to help send a strong message to the province. And let them know how our concerned, how our concerned our citizens are about climate change, as well as a need for faster action on solutions. In the weeks and months ahead, the regional official plan update and then the ensuing local official plan updates. Will provide other opportunities to start to implement a variety of green development standards in our community. Our new community group will be back to help work with you on these initiatives for climate leadership in the months ahead. In conclusion, though, our planet is at the breaking point. We have only ninety-one months remaining to have our green gas. Gas emissions by an ambitious fifty percent, just to meet our Paris Accord commitments by twenty thirty. We all know we need to be doing better, and this is an immediate opportunity to act. Our region is renowned for being pioneers, be it the blue box that is now a global standard, ESPA areas, our countryside line. Rapid transit, no smoking bylaws, and so many other things that are now taken for granted, despite being very bold and ambitious at the time. Green development standards will be another important area where our community can pioneer solutions and and lead. Please endorse this motion and let's see what our community can accomplish. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Thompson.
Council. I don't hope there's any questions or anything.
Are there any questions for the delegate? Council McMillan.
Thank you, Chair Martin, uh through you. Um with regards to your group. How how closely connected are you with the other groups? Because we've had other groups come and and request motions from council. Um fifty by thirty and transform Waterloo region and and I think those are the two. How closely does your group work with those other groups that are all advocating for the same type of thing?
Excellent. And and indeed, and I think you 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 point out that then tremendous myriad of uh environmental groups. And and initiatives around the region. It doesn't matter whether people advocating for cycling, people advocating for better transit, people advocating for. Uh all kinds of different environmental solutions. Our group's really trying to focus this new group, and and it's kind of spun out of grand. Uh the Grand River Environmental Network, as well as the Nuth Valley Eco Boosters in in Wilmont and others. Realizing that there's a specific need on these green development standards, because buildings account for so much of our carbon footprint. Here in Waterloo region, we really need to be doing better on them. We really need to be specifically stepping it up. So hence why we're bringing people together from all these groups uh and across our municipality to try to advocate for these things and and get it in place. Let's not say these other groups aren't still going to keep working on their core mandates, be it, you know, recycling or, you know, extending the life of land. The life landfill or better water or those sort of things. Uh but we're optimistic that uh, you know, this is something that the entire community can embrace. And we'll be working with all our municipalities on these things. And, you know, as Patrick alluded to at the very beginning as well. There are some pretty tremendous initiatives happening across the province. We we know the city of Toronto has had some fantastic green development standards in place since two thousand and ten. Uh the township of Halton Hills has an incredible uh uh system where you have to score a certain number of points just to get a building permit. And if tiny township of Halton Hills can do this and, you know, get two points for a heat pump and four points for permal paving and. Four more points for better insulation or whatever, you know, there's some tremendous models for our municipalities here uh as well. Ottawa is looking into it, Whitby. Markham, Vaughan, there's a lot happening in the province. Uh and in Waterloo region, we also have the Waterloo Community Energy Initiative. That's been working on it uh since about twenty eighteen. So there there's a lot of things happening. This is a huge opportunity to bring it all together, and this motion. Tonight uh is calling on our province to bring it together faster. You know, they they have plans for twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-eight and twenty thirty. We can't wait eight years for these standards. We can't wait eight years for these standards. We need them sooner.
So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counselor Merlehan?
Yeah, not a question for the delegate, but I did want to also point out that the IPCC report attached there, this is a sixty-four page report that was, it was issued the exact same day that I submitted this motion to, to the clerk to be considered. Now, the full report is almost 4,000 pages. I didn't think you'd want to read that. So I got the summary version for policymakers at sixty-four pages and there are, there is a section in there about building standards and the improvements that are needed. And this report, it's a global report that says we're way behind, way behind the eight ball and we need to start moving or we're not going to make these targets. So this is something that we can do as a, as a council. We can ask the province to, to speed up those timelines on changing the Ontario Building Code. To me, it just makes common sense. But I also have asked Dave Huchard, our chief building official. He was going to speak to this motion as well. I, so if he can do that when we're done speaking, he had some good points that he'd like to bring up as well.
David?
Thanks. Thanks, Counselor Merlehan and through the chair to all of council. Staff wanted to use this opportunity to comment on the motion and very briefly touch on energy efficiency in the building code. Recently, there has been a push to harmonize the Ontario Building Code to the National Code. Energy efficiency would be an example of where the codes could further line up. Through the years, the code cycles have introduced new building code requirements to approve energy efficiency. These include continuous insulation on the outside of a house, mandatory air barrier inspections that are done by our building staff and installing a drain water recovery stack in each house, which pre-treats the cold water coming into the house before it heads over to the hot water tank. Even with those requirements, setting additional targets for net zero or net zero ready homes makes sense to staff as outlined in the motion to provide homeowners with a high quality home and low operating costs. The motion would also help towards reaching the township climate goals. One of the strategies in the transform Waterloo region community climate action strategy was to have net zero houses. It would also help towards the 2030 interim target, which the motion speaks to as well. Education and providing training is an important part of the motion as well to our building staff. The building code at the provincial level is changing more frequently at the moment than we've ever seen in the past. And this would be another example of a significant change. So in summary, it appears the biggest issue with the proposed building code update is that the province has not outlined a plan to adopt net zero ready housing requirements as outlined in the townships' energy efficiency and greenhouse gas reduction goals. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any question, any questions for Dave? Counselor McMillan?
Thank you, Chair Martin. A lot of these changes, you talk about lower operating costs, but a lot of them can be implemented without a huge upfront cost as well, right? Like we can add these changes without exacerbating home affordability problems. Isn't that correct?
Yeah, through Chair Martin to Counselor McMillan. So lower operating costs would be high, you know, low efficiency HVAC systems, appliances, fixtures. There could be a bit of an upfront cost to those systems, but lower operating costs throughout the life of, of the appliances. So you know, a little bit upfront, but the savings would be over the lifespan of the house and the appliances.
Any further discussion? Thank you, Mr. Thomason. Please turn your video and microphone off.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And thank you again to Counselor Merlehan for this notice of motion. Staff will place the motion on the April 25th council agenda for the discussion from council. We have, we have no unfinished business. We have some consent, consent items. And before we pass a motion to approve and receive the consent items as a whole, does anyone wish to remove any items for further discussion? Counselor Merlehan?
Well, I had my hand up before we moved on to the next thing. I, I did want to ask if council would consider moving the motion this week unless they're really opposed. I wasn't sure why staff put that as a notice of motion because it did. It, it was submitted well in advance and council got it in their package. It wasn't like a, you know, it was just on the spot here. Would anybody support moving that, that motion tonight?
Mayor Shant?
Yeah, I'll second the motion.
Any other discussion? Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. We can pass that motion this evening. I would just request council suspend the procedural, the section of the procedural bylaw that requires us to put notice of motion on front, in front of council for discussion at a future meeting. That just requires a simple majority and then council will be free to, to pass that this evening if they wish.
Okay, oh. I'll make that motion to bypass the procedural, whatever Clerk Smith just said.
Anybody second? Okay, all in favor? Okay, so then who, Mayor Shant would second that. Any further discussion? So the motion will come forward tonight. I don't have in front of me. We all know what it is.
Yeah.
All those in favor? Okay, that's carried. For the, I need a mover for the motion. Counselor Merlehan, somebody would second it? Mayor Shant? All those in favor? And that's carried. Good. Back to consent items. Is there anything you want to pull out of there? Somebody, Mayor Shant?
Thank you. I just want to recognize the memo on National Volunteer Week, April 24th to 30th and just to thank all our volunteers and the important work that they do all around the township. I, I think all of our councilors are involved with, with volunteers in one way or another and we certainly couldn't have the programming and I guess, quality of life that we have in the township without our volunteers. So I would just highlight that. I noticed, also note that there's a volunteer appreciation celebration at the Woolwich Memorial Centre on Wednesday, April 27th, from six thirty to eight thirty. I can't be there. I have a regional council meeting, but I think Counselor Martin will be there to represent the mayor's office. Thanks.
Yes, I will be there. And if you would like any comments passed on or if I'm to say anything, you can write a mode for me on a piece of paper. Would you do that? Counselor Merlehan?
Yeah, I'd like to pull the St. Jacobs Park art piece report to discuss.
Okay. What's the discussion?
Okay. I guess I have a few questions. I don't know if Thomas will be, I think he's the report writer here. Through you, Chair Martin, to Thomas. Thomas, do we, does Woolwich Township have any kind of official policy on how we choose public art?
Through you, Chair Martin, Counselor Merlehan. Not, not that I am aware of. In my time with the township, I did not believe and I don't think that the other more recent installation, art installations as well too, that, that we put up in, in, in 2021 in the Elmire Core, that sort of thing. I went through a process, but I may be wrong.
Yeah, okay. And in the report, it talks about, you know, consulting with the St. Jacobs BIA and they were quite supportive. Would, would, would this type of art, would it be selected? Would, is this what the St. Jacobs BIA would have selected as a piece of public art if they had commissioned the piece themselves and, and the message was, you know, something to do with St. Jacobs or something that speaks to the community and the residents there is?
Yeah, through you, Chair Martin, Counselor Merlehan. I guess I'd have to further consult with the BIA. I know that some of the, some of the members, Ed and Bob Wilbur did reach out to Timothy Schmaltz and we're working with him. I'm not sure exactly how the, how the, how the selection happened or if it was a piece that Timothy was already working on, but definitely something I could get some additional information on. I would have to chat with the BIA though.
Okay. And was the, was the, any of the public, any residents involved in the choosing of this piece?
There was not a public consultation process for the art selection.
No. I'm just wondering, has there, has there been any question about? You know, we talk a lot about inclusivity. You know, and this being a faith type piece. Mr. Schmaltz's work is synonymous with, you know, Christian faith. Was there any discussion about whether or not it was appropriate to have, you know, a Christian type piece over any other kind of denominations?
I don't know if Mayor Shant wants to jump in?
Mayor Shant?
No, I, I can't, I can't answer the question about, about that. I just, I, I don't see it as a Christian. I, I did not see it as a Christian sort of sculpture. I, I saw it as very non-denominational and speaking you know, to, to a positive sort of, you know, growth and I, I didn't see it as a religious at all.
I can provide some further comments as well too, through you, Chair Martin. Yeah, just I guess to echo Mayor Shant's comments, the, the, although Mr. Schmaltz has done some religious work, so he's also done a number of other works as well too, as we've highlighted in our report. And there was, there was no, no religious intent by Timothy. We had asked him for a bit of a description for the piece and we've included that in our report as well too. And, and I think faith can mean, you know, a number of different things. It's not necessarily faith, you know, isn't necessarily tied directly to religion. So, yeah.
Okay.
Counselor Merlehan?
Yeah, I guess I just, I just want to be able to have this conversation. I mean, people can interpret things however they like and depends on, you know, what their perspective is, background, community, faith. And, you know, and I am cognizant of, you know, the public statues in Wilmont and the fallout that, that they've had from, from receiving some free statues and which they thought, you know, they didn't intend for the community. I guess the, the social community to advance to the point of where it was when they were making those selections, but you know, having, knowing what the climate is in, in various communities, it, it's, is it worth having the discussion to, to, to see if, well, it's called faith, that there are a piece like this that could be interpreted multiple ways in, in public space. And I'm just, I want to put that out there for, you know, consideration. It's not offensive by any means. I mean, Timothy Schmaltz is an amazing sculptor. I went to school with him. He was much older than me, but you know, it's great to have an artist have, you know, in his, in his own community, be able to, to put stuff here. But, you know, the context of the times that we're living in now, you know, is it appropriate? And that's all I'm asking.
Sorry, through you, Chair Martin, I guess. Patrick, I, I didn't pick up the, the exact question there. Sorry if you're looking for a review of the process.
No, it's just a comment for, for council. Don't, don't swat.
Counselor McNamara?
Yeah, it's just a comment for council. I'll jump in. I think Counselor Merlehan is probably right. Like if we know Timothy Schmaltz, you know, this is a Christian piece. If you look at the body of his work and where he's coming from, I, I can see that Mayor Shant looks at it and doesn't see a religious piece there. I, I think it is probably something that we need to be cognizant of, like the lens that we have when we view things. We might not see this as exclusive. There might be other people that do, that don't connect with Christian faith or connect strongly with a different faith and, and don't see that reflected in, in other places. So I think it's probably, I don't think it's something that we need to stop this project for, but I do think that it is worth being cognizant of and, and understand how, you know, given the context, the body of work of the artist, how we might be able to see it as, as not exclusive, but maybe some other people might.
Mayor Shant?
So now, before we go ahead and do anything, we need to judge the religious affiliation of the person who's providing a service for us?
Counselor McNamara?
I would, I would say, yeah, it's important, not just the religious background of the person who's doing the work, but understand the whole context of everything and whether that's adding to inclusivity or if that's increasing exclusivity. I think that that is a lens that should be placed on, yeah, everything that we do. I, I think that that is, I think that's the world that we're all committed to building and I think that that is something that can help us move forward.
Mayor Shant?
Yeah, I agree. We need to, to be cognizant of, of you know, providing space that, that's free for, for everyone to enjoy. I'm, I'm having a little trouble squaring the circle here on a, a piece of art that is called faith that could apply to any faith that you look at, except maybe an agnostic, but you know, it, it's about life. It's about planting seeds and, and watching it grow and, and life giving and that. That'll be, you pick any religion and that's a major theme of it. So if that makes it a religious symbol, then, then so be it. But I, I don't, I, I agree that we need to be cognizant of these things and aware of them. I just don't see the issue with this particular piece.
Counselor McNamara?
Thank you, Chair Martin. And Mayor Shant, I don't, I don't, I'm not arguing how you should see it. I just think that we need to recognize that other people might see it other way, other ways. And this is probably the most celebrated Catholic sculptor in Canada. You know, his work is displayed at the Vatican. He's, he's world renowned for his Catholic sculptures. So when a world renowned Catholic sculptor creates a piece that in itself, in isolation, doesn't have a cross on it, but in that context, you might not see it. And I won't argue how you should see it, but I think that we could recognize that other people might see that as a Catholic sculpture, given the, the, the context of, of the artist's work. And, and even if we do say it is a Catholic sculpture, I'm not saying that's not a reason not to put it in the park, but would we, would we celebrate an Islamic sculpture the same way? If it was a world renowned Islamic sculptor, but there was no, you know, crescent moon on, on the piece. That, that's just things that we should be aware of and should be a part of our decision-making process.
Counselor Redicop? Council Redicop?
Yeah, I would not define Timothy as a Catholic sculptor. He's an artist. He's a sculptor who happens to be Catholic. And he did that Blackberry sculpture with monkeys in Waterloo. He's done the fireman in, in another park. So it, he's a, he's an artist who is a sculptor, but he happens to be Catholic. That, that's how I would define him. And I think his sculptor has already provided us with great inspiration already, and it's not even there yet.
Okay, somebody prepared to move all the items except the St. Jacobs Park, Park Art Installation. We'll do that separate?
I want to speak there. Chair Martin.
Go ahead.
Thank you. The hands aren't working tonight, apparently. I, I guess my concern is what can we put in the park that everybody's going to agree with? And, and we can't look at everything through everybody else's eyes. So, you know, short of not doing anything, I don't know whether we can do anything right. That's, that's a concern I have because everybody will look at things differently and then somebody won't, won't like it or will, will have a different meaning. And where does it start? Where does it stop?
Okay, somebody prepared to move all the rec, all the consent items except the St. Jacobs Park, Park Art Installation? Council Merlin, Mayor Shants, any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay, that's carried. We'll go back to St. Jacobs Park Art Installation. Is somebody ready to move that? Council McNamara, Mayor Shants, any further discussion? I'll call a question. All those in favor? Opposed? One, that's carried. Staff report and memos. Election 2022 Report Four, Language Recounts, etc. Is it, this evening, we have Clerk Jeff Smith with us again to provide counsel with an overview of his report. Take it away, Jeff.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll try to be brief, given the hour. Really, in terms of things that are new this year, staff are proposing an automatic recount policy. So that's really with the addition of hand-counted paper ballots. And then the recommendation is that where the difference between the elected and not-elected candidates is 10 votes for mayor or five votes for any office of council, that an automatic recount be triggered. We're also proposing minor amendments to the township's use of corporate resources policies. The report is much more thorough than that, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Council Merlin?
Sorry, I'd just like to move the report and recommendation as is.
Somebody would second it? Council Redicop, any further discussion? All those in favor? That's carried. Now we're moving along. Proposed change towards mileage rate. We'll go to Director of Finance, Richard.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So essentially, our mileage rate right now is at 48 cents. It's been there since 2014. As council can appreciate, there has been cost escalations since that time, including, you know, the maintenance, you would have on your vehicles, insurance, and most recently, I would say gasoline prices have definitely increased and definitely well above the $1.27 we saw as an average back in 2014. Staff are recommending that the mileage rate go up to 55 cents, which is the lower rate of the CIR rate. That 48 cents that we currently have, that's what we did back in 2014, was the same methodology. So staff is looking at continuing on with that methodology and going with that bottom rate of 55 cents. Uh, and, and really, from a cost perspective, we're, we're kind of seeing that it potentially could have about a $7,500 impact to the 2022 budget. And I would comment that probably at least half, if not more than that, would be covered off by budgets that don't rely on the, on the tax levy. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions council may have.
Any questions? Council Merlin?
Well, I gave staff a whole lot of grief about that increase in 2014, and I won't do that now. So I'll just move the report as recommendation as is.
Thank you. Was somebody seconded? Council Shants, any further discussion? All those in favor? That's carried. We have a petition for drainage works by owner Mad West Breslau Limited. Jared, are you gonna take this?
Thank you, Chair Martin, and through you to members of council. We do receive two petitions actually from the owner, Mad West Breslau Limited, for drainage related to their plan of subdivision. His council will see there is four recommendations before them. One, to accept the petitions. Two, to exempt us from the, from the requirements of the purchasing bylaw so that we can simply appoint a drainage engineer. We are asking council to endorse Joel Miller from K-Smart Associates to accept both petitions. And with the north petition, I think it's important to understand that that is a petition requiring outlet. And currently, that site in, in, it's been viewed by the township, requires legal outlet status to move forward for development. There have been discussions with Mad West, with the, with the property owners to the north. And we felt this was the most appropriate way to clarify and to provide that legal outlet status for that Mad West development. I will remind council that the majority of their property is encumbered by Breslau Drain One, which is heading to the south. And that second petition for what we're calling the Lands to the West was really just an extension of that. And that's what you see in recommendation number four. And again, we're requesting that Joel Miller be appointed as he has the most intimate knowledge with the area. He is our peer reviewer as well for a number of items related to the development. So we just thought that it was the most efficient way forward. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions council may have.
Any questions? Council Shants?
Uh, thank you, through you, Chair. If this gets approved and passed tonight, does that mean we're going to get on with doing that Breslau Drain finally?
Yeah, so through you, Chair Martin, to Council Shants, Breslau Drain One. Joel has, has firmed up that he intends to bring that final report to council for consideration this summer. And this petition does not affect that process at all. So that was still the process. It's just good timing. But we, we can commit to the summer for a final report from, from Mr. Miller.
I'll move the recommendation.
And somebody would second that? Council Merlin, any further discussion? I'll call a question. All those in favor? Thank you. That's carried. Other business. The following resolution needs to be passed for council to participate in the all-council meeting later this month. The resolution reads that the council of township of Woolwich participate in a virtual all-council meeting hosted by the region of Waterloo on April 29th, 2022, from 1:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. Moved by who? Council Merlin? Mayor Shants, any further discussions? I'll call a question. All those in favor? That's carried. Council reports and updates. Are there any reports from council? Council McNamara?
Yeah, sorry, I know it's late. I'll be really quick. On Sunday, the Sugar Kings had a 2 o'clock game. We had 600 people in the arena and a referee tried to cancel the game. I don't like bringing my council hat to the arena. I don't like bringing my Sugar King hat in here, but I wanted to relay the WMC staff, Thomas Vanderhoff, even David, went above and beyond to get this game played. They had sent emails to the league to satisfy this referee on the safety of plywood and replacement of Plexiglas, which is very common. So it would have been a disaster for us, for the league, if they would have canceled that game. And the WMC staff were amazing. The customer service was incredible. Thomas was great. And, and the whole staff just went way above and beyond to, to satisfy what this referee needed. So I, I just wanted to not thank you here as a counselor, because I'll do that with my other job, but just acknowledge the incredible customer service that was delivered on the weekend and save the day for all the fans and the, and the teams that were there that day.
I see thumbs up. That's good. Outstanding activity list. Is there anything to bring forward? No? Notice of motion, none? A German? Council Merlin? Council Redicop, all those in favor? That's carried. Now, I had some closing remarks. What am I to do with these?
So what we have is the special counsel that we will be passing and the motion for the so yeah, so we need to, so Sandy will be chairing now.
Oh, we're doing that tonight yet?
Yes.
Oh, I, okay. Yep. Yeah, very good. Yep, Mayor Shants? Take it away.
Okay, do we need to, we need to adjourn the other meet? We did that, didn't we? Okay. This is a special council meeting to deal with one issue. Are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest? Seeing that, there was nothing on the special council agenda, but council has indicated in closed session, they would like to ratify the following recommendation tonight. It came out of closed and was passed at the committee of the whole meeting earlier this evening. Recommendation is as follows. The summary of recommendations from the committee of the whole meeting dated April 11th, 2022, be approved as presented, and that would be the ratification of the collective bargaining settlement that the council of the township of Woolwich ratifies the collective bargaining settlement entered into with the Canadian Public Employees Local 1542 for 2022 through 2024. So that, that was passed in closed. I don't think I need to do anything further with that. Is that right, Olivia or Jeff?
Uh, so through you, Madam Chair, yes, if, if you just have a mover and a seconder for adopting that, that recommendation by council.
Thank you. Can I have a mover and a seconder? Counselor Shants, Counselor Martin, all those in favor? And that is carried. Thank you. And then we need a motion that the following bylaw in the hands of the clerk, you read a first, second, and third time and finally passed, that it be numbered as bylaw 25-2022, and that it be signed by the mayor and clerk and sealed with a corporate seal. That is a bylaw to confirm all actions and proceedings of the council of April 11th, 2022, which is the motion we just passed. So can I have a mover and a seconder for that, Council Merlin? Excuse me, and Council McNamara, all those in favor? That's carried. And now, meeting to adjourn, to meet again in regular session. Excuse me, on Monday, April 25th, 2022. Moved by Counselor Shant, seconded by Counselor Redicop, all those in favor? That's carried. And I'll close the meeting by thanking everyone who participated or tuned into the meeting. Council, please stay connected until the live stream has stopped. And good night, everyone.
One comment yet, if I may. Happy Easter to everyone. Enjoy a good weekend.
Thank you.